We're going to reconvene an open session for closed session. No action was taken. So that is the report out. We'd like to go to public expression. First, I have the speaker cards. JR Rose, please come forward. Restate your name for the record and know you have three minutes.
My name is JR Rose. Members of the board, staff. I came here before you. First of all, I would like to make a commendation to one of your departments, the Department of Environmental Health. I had an issue at my mobile home park and even though they're short-staffed and whatever, they come out and they're working to resolve it in a timely manner. And I want to recommend them and thank them for their participation in helping me out there in my park. And I know my neighbors in the park are glad of it. Next thing I'd like to talk to you about is we had the discussion about resolutions and what they were and what they mean. I don't mean to contradict the counselor there, but the information has told me that it was not binding, that it was a promissory deal that the boards and the city councils and the state and the federal do. It's supposedly a promise to abide by it like a gentleman's agreement. And I've seen nowadays a lot of gentleman agreements go out through the window and stuff. But in front of you, I brought for your deal to look at is a little research. And as you know, I'm for rent stabilization for mobile home parks in the county. So I went out and got this extra information for you. I hope you read it. I hope you take it to understanding. It's really self-explanatory. The description on the front is better than I could even think about narrating or doing whatever has to be done. I hear the same arguments that with the budget prices and stuff, that we can't afford to do this. And personally, with the way the seniors are taking hits nowadays, I can't see how you can afford not to because of the financial burden that is put upon the seniors in this community. A lot of things are going on that a lot of the entitlement programs are going down. They say social security is an entitlement, but actually people pay into social security. So I can understand why they would call that an entitlement. A lot of people that are on the fixed incomes of 40, 50 years ago are in dire need and they really need this board to step up. And I would ask you to step up and do it. I know my time. He didn't hit it. My time is almost up. I put it in my head.
I've been watching.
And so, but I really hope you read that paper. I hope you take it to heart. I hope you put some action into it. And if you would, I'd like to see the copies gave to the CEO and the county council for their deals and for the record board. That's, I had to get a few of them and I couldn't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Mr. Mark Johnson, please come forward.
My question is for Ms. Jones.
Oh, okay. Ms. Jones, please come forward. State your name for the record. Know you have three minutes and actually, we have three speakers to the same subject.
Correct. Devon Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. We're here today not to speak on a specific issue, but instead to introduce a coalition of a group that we have formed together loosely called the Mendocino County Agriculture and Business Coalition. And I have some supporting documentation here. Basically, what this ABC group is, is what we're calling it, is it's the Mendocino County Farm Bureau, the North Coast Builders Exchange, and the Employers Council of Mendocino County. And we decided that there are a number of issues that we find similar positions on from all three organizations. The second page, it's in those handouts that I provided, it's a list of our six primary issues that we think as a group, we can together find a united voice on. And so Mark Johnson from Employers Council will be speaking on those issues. But basically, what I'm here today is we wanted to introduce ourselves as this organization. And we want to bring it to your attention that we want to strengthen our collective voice. We're not going to sacrifice the voice of each individual entity within the group. There will be issues that all three do not agree upon, but for those six main issues that we're presenting to you today, we expect to come together and have a united voice towards. Together, you know, all three organizations roughly represent over 3,000 members within the county and thousands of jobs and employers as well. So we have a vested interest in continuing to have a presence in Mendocino County. This will just give us a stronger voice. So with that, I would like to, if the chair agrees, to have Mark Johnson come up and speak on the six issues.
Absolutely, and thank you.
Mark Johnson, again, the three organizations have agreed on six primary issues that we'll be speaking on as time progresses. And I wanted to just briefly run through them. First is to ensure that there's an adequate and dependable water supply for all users in the county. Secondly, to encourage the development of more efficient local planning departments to streamline processes with land use issues, permitting, and other business needs. Third, to work with local governments to develop and implement sound fiscal management practices to protect services and prevent additional burdens on taxpayers. Fourth, to advocate for planning, environmental, and building policies that give proper consideration to economic benefits to the community and allow for sustainable future growth and development. Five, to promote the development and maintenance of technical training to be able to sustain a quality local workforce. And finally, to encourage responsible citizens of Mendocino County to run for public office in regional, county, city, and special district elections and seek appointments to various government boards, commissions, and authorities. And I'd be happy to respond to questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Keith Woods?
Thank you. My name is Keith Woods. I work at an organization called the North Coast Builders Exchange. We're headquartered in Santa Rosa, but we represent contractors and others throughout Sonoma, Lake, and Mendocino County. In fact, out of our 1,500-plus members, historically, over 10% or more are up here in Mendocino County. So we have a real interest in what happens up here. I came up just to lend our support officially to the new coalition. When I started work at the Builders Exchange back in 2000 and began coming up to Mendocino County more to meet with our members and look for what we could do for them, I began to notice more and more over the years that we were in great alignment with Farm Bureau issues and positions, Employers Council. And we just started, as Devon mentioned, a few months ago, saying, why don't we partner up? Now, we come in peace, by the way. We're not here for any complaints. That'll come later. But right now, we're very much here just to let you know that we're going to be working on common issues. And as Devon said, whenever we don't agree, then we won't have an ABC position on that issue. We'll each do our own thing and you'll continue to hear from us individually as well as collectively. So I'm only here to indicate our support. We do have one of our board members up here in Mendocino, that shy, retiring wallflower, Lee Howard, is a member of our Board of Directors. And when he speaks, he'll often be speaking for the Builders Exchange. But I'll be up here very often as well, working on ABC issues. And we want to support what ECMC and Farm Bureau do, and we know we can count on their support. So this is nothing more than a hi, get acquainted, first date with you, so that you understand. You will be hearing from us. And it will be important to us that when you have anything that goes on that pertains to the issues that Mark just outlined, we really would like to hear if there's an advisory committee. We'll be watching, but it would be nice to have staff keep us aware officially as the ABC on issues that fit into our six primary ones. So thank you. I'm glad to be up here and I think I'll see a couple of you tomorrow on our trip, I assume, and I'll be back to you with details.
Thursday.
Excuse me, that's Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McCowen?
Madam Chair, the letter refers to the six issues. They're on the attached sheet. I just wanted to make sure someone has a copy of it because it didn't get down to here.
Supervisor Colfax, could you send a copy?
Well, with the attached sheet, though, so does the clerk have? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move to our 11:00 AM. We're behind time. Agenda item number 8A. And it is presentation. The, uh-oh. Do I have the wrong thing here? No. It's Arts Council of Mendocino County on the new and ongoing programs and services. It, I, excuse me. I think that it was on a subject on the consent calendar and...
I have two items. Should I have done two separate lists? We don't have any. But could you?
Ma'am, we're not even on consent calendar yet.
No, but if you notice, I also asked the public questions. And I'm asking you, is it a review of the form? Like if I want to speak on both items?
I will call you. We have a timed item right now, so thank you. Please come forward. And Ms. Angelo, do you want to introduce the topic?
So this is a presentation. Thank you, Chair.
There we go. Thank you, yeah. This is a presentation from the Arts Council, and it is their annual presentation, letting us know what the latest events are and their status. So thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Carmel. Good morning, county supervisors and staff. My name is Alyssa M. Weir. Since July of this year, I've been the interim director of the Arts Council of Mendocino County. I had the pleasure to and privilege to work with Anika Winsland for a year before taking on this new position. Anna is here today as well to show her ongoing support for ACMC. Thank you so much, Anna. For the past two years, ACMC staff and board have come before the county government to tell you about ACMC's countywide programs, celebrate our local arts champions, and forge an ongoing partnership between the county and ACMC through general operating support for this organization. Through your support over the past two years, you've acknowledged the impact of the arts on the economy, tourism, education, quality of life, and you've recognized the importance of the arts to this county. Thank you. We're here today to share our recent news and ask you to continue the strong partnership between Mendocino County Board of Supervisors and the MCO, ACMC. This past year, and especially the past few months, have been a busy time for this organization. We went through a graceful change in leadership, launched a new ACMC website, and next we'll be creating and launching new websites for Ukiah Players Theater, Space, Los Ios de la Vida, Ukiah Symphony Orchestra, Mendocino Music Festival, Mendocino Ballet, Art Center Ukiah, Gloriana Musical Theater, Arena Theater, Mendocino County Museum, and others through our Arts, through our Mendocino Arts Website Improvement Project. Each organization's website will have its own look and feel, but all will share the same technologies underneath, thereby achieving cost savings for each organization and making it easier for Mendocino County art lovers, residents, and tourists alike to find what they are looking for. In August, ACMC relocated its office to the historic Ukiah Depot. This beautiful space gives our organization greater visibility and suggests creative program enhancements, such as using the old ticket booth to sell tickets to Mendocino County art events. Also this month, in partnership with VMC, we are preparing to print and distribute 10,000 copies of a new countywide arts brochure. Let's talk about art education. We all have paintings and photographs on our walls. We all listen to music. We all watch movies. And we all know it is the creativity of artists and designers that drives these multi-billion-dollar industries. But when times are tough, the arts are the first to be cut from schools' curriculum. ACMC's GASP, Get Arts in the Schools program, in partnership with MCOE, places professional local artists in Mendocino County schools, where children learn to be producers of culture, not just consumers. We also know the arts are a positive force for the welfare of children. Low-income populations with high cultural participation rates are more than twice as likely to have low truancy and delinquency rates. The arts are also a poverty fighter. They do this through direct employment, and they do it by leveraging other jobs, restaurants, retail stores, and hotels that spring up alongside cultural districts. When you see galleries and arts organizations moving into vacant storefronts during a recession, they're the first signs of economic recovery. Restaurants and shops are attracted to areas where there is a healthy cultural life. The artists come first, other businesses follow. This is precisely the time to invest in the arts locally. Our county already derives 80 million annually from the arts and arts-related tourism. Through strong partnerships with Visit Mendocino, Mendocino County Lodging Association, The Skunk Train, KZYX and Z, Mendocino Coast Botanical Gardens, the Community Foundation of Mendocino County, and you, ACMC markets cultural events so cultural tourists visiting Mendocino County can find what they're looking for, spend more, and stay longer. Yet no percentage of the sales tax generated by arts tourism goes directly to ACMC. ACMC will be asking the county for 30,000 in general operating support, about one hundredth of 1% of the county budget and roughly half the cost of a full-time employee. The funding ACMC receives from the county is tripled through its partnerships with the California Arts Council, Community Foundation of Mendocino County, Mendocino County Lodging Association, and the Mendocino County Office of Education. Without county support, ACMC's strategic partnerships at state and local levels that allow us to effectively pursue our mission would be fundamentally threatened. In summary, funding for the Arts Council of Mendocino County is an investment in this county's future as a cultural destination. It meets your public trust requirements to deliver services meeting the cultural needs of our counties, of our communities, and contributes directly to economic development. Not only is this your opportunity to invest in our county in 2010 and 11, you're investing in 2020, 2030, and on. There's never been a more strategic time to renew your support for Mendocino County artists and art organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weir, for your presentation. Seeing no board comment, we'll go to public expression under this agenda item, and we have a speaker, Anna Mahoney. Please come forward. Restate your name for the record.
Anna Mahoney. I'm a member of the Community Foundation of Mendocino's Board of Directors. I'm here to support the request for the $30,000 funding for the Arts Council. For a period of quite a few years, both the Community Foundation and countless volunteers worked very hard to create this Arts Council and a cultural plan for the community. The plan itself said how the Arts Council would operate. It would operate to strengthen the infrastructure for cultural activities in our county. It would play an important role in economic development, as was indicated by our prior speaker. It would participate in marketing initiatives and participate in educational and social service settings. Right now, they've done a lot, and they're involved in a lot more. The future for today is a future for tomorrow, and on, and on, and on. The Arts Council can really leverage, if you will, a lot of different activities that contribute to the community's welfare and community's health as an economic entity. On behalf of the Community Foundation, I'd like to support, even though this, we know, is a difficult time where you're trying to juggle everything and find every single cent that you've got, but we'd like you to really seriously consider funding the Arts Council this year. And I know it's difficult. I've been sitting out there for a long time. I have a letter.
Okay. Thank you. Please hand it to the clerk.
I just wanted to add that we have some people who didn't fill out cards who wanted to speak.
Okay. Go ahead and sit down, and we'll continue with public comment. Anyone else that wants to address this issue, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Michael Doten with the Mendocino Wine Grape and Wine Commission.
And could you please spell your last name for the clerk?
Last name spelled D-O-T-E-N. I'm here today to read a letter from Dave Batt, the president of my organization. "August 17, 2010. A Letter to the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors and Interested Public." From Dave Batt, president of the Mendocino Wine Grape and Wine Commission. "Supervisors and friends, to all a good morning. I would have preferred to deliver this message in person because it is important, but right now we are in divide and conquer mode as some of our grape growers are in session sharing best practices and expertise as part of a plan to eradicate the European grapevine moth in this county. It's just one example of what Mendocino Wine Grape and Wine Commission does to get involved in supporting economic viability for grape growers, creating positive economic impact for one of the few agricultural products to literally carry the Mendocino County name beyond our borders. As for winemaking and grape growing, 343 grape growers and over 80 vintners make this their lifeblood. This is their art. So it may come as no surprise to you that I am dedicated to the cause of supporting the benefits of those who express their life's passion through art. As such, I'm a strong supporter of the Arts Council of Mendocino County. I support its mission, and I support its request for funding for its upcoming fiscal year. Even with its lean staff of two part-timers and volunteer board, the Arts Council of Mendocino County is nonetheless an important nexus of key partnerships, one that generates momentum in both economic improvement and in social well-being for Mendocino County. Further and in particular, we are linked with the Arts Council through our partnership with Visit Mendocino County, along with a connection to the Mendocino County Lodging Association. This is economic power in which each of us does. We bring new revenue into the county. We share common goals. We benefit from each other. Beauty of the land, pleasures of tourism, those are about economic viability of many businesses across the county. Wine and food, those are about local art and the artisans who make their contribution as well. As for the Arts Council of Mendocino County, of course, the same is true. Without support from the supervisors, there would be less of that. How do you measure the impact in dollars of a program called GASP, an acronym for Get Arts in Schools program? The ACMC currently places artists in schools countywide in partnership with MCOE. This program is hugely popular and sold out each year, clearly meeting a need and delivering a benefit. Without support from the supervisors, the partnership with MCOE would not be possible. And then there's the mega website project, indexing artists, nonprofit and for-profit organizations, event and festivals, too. It's sponsored by the CFMC. Sure, it's about art, but it's also about economic impact. Here's the interesting thing. The CFMC reports that art sales and related activities generate approximately $80 million annually in Mendocino County. Did you know that none of the sales tax generated is available directly to the Arts Council? Without support from the supervisors, the partnership with CFMC would not be possible. Thank you for the opportunity to have a voice today and for your past support of the programs of the Art Council. Supervisors, I want you to know that I'm squarely in favor of funding the Arts Council of Mendocino County for its new fiscal year. Art really can have an impact in the community, and the Arts Council has proven it time and again. Thank you. Dave Batt.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Anna Quinsland, former executive director of the Arts Council and now private citizen. I'm here today to show my support for the Arts Council and for its new and continued leadership. I am also here to say thank you for the partnership that I've enjoyed with you for the past two years and for your support. Much groundwork has been laid, many partnerships and programs are firmly in place, and the Arts Council is providing a valuable service to its members, partners, citizens, and visitors to Mendocino County. The work of the Council enriches our community in so many ways. The county's support is vital to the continued success of this organization. Operating support is hard to come by. With your support and the support from the state, the California Arts Council, the Arts Council will be able to launch into its second decade of promoting, supporting, and advocating for the arts of Mendocino County. Thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Jan Stevens, spelled S-T-E-P-H-E-N-S. And I am a board member of the Arts Council. I'm a visual artist, a business owner, and an arts educator. I'd like to read you some feedback from a teacher who was involved in the GASP program. And she writes, "We are writing to thank ACMC and MCOE for funding our school in the GASP program. As a teacher, I understand the importance of the arts in a child's development. However, the government pressure to have students perform well in standardized tests robbed those students of classroom time in the arts, science, and history. Having a professional teacher artist come with materials and excellently planned lessons for five weeks is a great gift for both students and teachers. The students were proud of their artwork. They learned from each other. Students who struggle with academics found an area where they could feel success. Thank you for a fine program." And this is signed A. Holly. And I would also like to briefly add that there have been many quantitative and qualitative studies done on the arts education and the effect that it has in academics. And what it has shown is that students with high arts, and that includes visual music, dance, and theater, score much higher in their SATs. They are more, they are more likely to come to school and be engaged and to go on to higher education. So the arts have such a profound impact on our students, and so I thank you for your former support of the Arts Council, and I hope you will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Speakers?
Good morning. Scott Schneider, president and CEO of Visit Mendocino County. Of course, I'm here in support of the arts, very, very important to both our mission and promoting visitors to the county, but also for the local community and the schools. I have to say that the Mendocino County Lodging Association this year increased their funding by 25% in partnering with the Arts Council over the last four or five years. It has been amazing how much the organization has grown, both in membership, in programs, and in community support. Anna and now Alyssa have done an incredible job, really getting the arts out there, supporting not only its own organization, but the organizations that depend on them. The galleries, the coastal group, the inland group. We're getting promotional materials together out there to get to visitors. We're really trying to showcase Mendocino County as a destination for the arts. Very excited, of course, to share office space with them yet again in the new depot, and we're excited about the potentials that lay there. But again, we strongly, strongly support the Arts Council. I feel that they have been doing a tremendous job for all of us throughout the county, and I urge you to continue your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, supervisors and staff. Hal Wagonette, I'm a board member on the Arts Council. While this is hardly the first date, as the ABC was here, perhaps we're on the way to getting married. I would like to just briefly read a note, which will become a formal letter at the proper time, from Susan Norgard, the executive director of the Community Foundation. I think that she really nailed the issues here to the Board of Supervisors dated yesterday. "I remember a time before there was a functioning Arts Council in Mendocino County. It was a tragedy that a county so rich in the arts had no organization to capitalize on this resource. Something needed to be done. So the Community Foundation and countless volunteers worked over a period of years to create an Arts Council and a cultural plan for the county. The plan was right on target, and the Arts Council has produced amazing results in the focus areas. In terms of infrastructure, it is now, with the help of a Community Foundation grant, helping arts organizations develop professional websites and linking those websites with a master website for the arts in the county. It is an important player in the marketing and promotion of Mendocino County, and its Get Arts in the Schools program, GASP, which you've heard before, is bringing the arts to our classrooms while art teachers are being laid off in local schools. I am fully aware of what it takes to build an organization like the Arts Council on just a shoestring budget. We cannot afford to let it go by the wayside. The human costs of rebuilding it would be tremendous, and we would lose a key player in the hoped-for renaissance of our county. The arts are not a frill. They are essential to our children and our county, and we need to recognize that in our county budget. Signed, Susan Norgard." I'll provide a copy of this for the clerk later because this is not actually completed.
We actually do have a copy.
Oh.
Yes.
They're beforehand with it, as we say. Thank you very much for your time, and we hope to have other considerations.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce our president, Bruce Jones, and that'll wrap it up.
Sir, restate your name for the record.
Bruce Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I'm president of the Arts Council.
I'm president of the Arts Council, and I'm an artist. I do sculpture, drawing, painting. But for some decades, I did economics and business. And I wanted to talk just briefly about what you've got here with the Arts Council from a practical economics point of view. You've got three employees who are part-time, hourly people. Nobody's full-time. Everybody's hourly. That gives us most flexibility. That means the executive director has to juggle hours, not only for programs and for media stuff, but also for herself, to fit within budget as well as possible, but always have a pool of projects that we can do to help all the county arts everywhere, all different kinds of arts, always have programs that we can go to if we have any extra. So you're getting a really efficient organization from people that just love this stuff. Because they're part-time and they're hourly, we can shrink when we have to, but we always have places that we can go when we don't have to, like, for example, Anna Quinsland last year cooking up the Sculpture Garden and the Skunk Train enhancements. There's always a lot of stuff that we can do to improve the arts, improve arts tourism, and help out with the multiplier that, depending on what studies you read, is anywhere from three to seven. On any funds you can give us as our primary funder during the past two years, we can multiply that somewhere between three and seven times for art tourism. So we're looking forward to being able to do more of this. And everything the staff does, we've got a large board that represents all different kinds of art specialties all over the county, and that board supplements the staff pretty good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the presentation. Any other speaker from the public? Seeing no one come forward, we do appreciate your presentation. Supervisor Pinches.
A quick comment. I've been a strong supporter of the Arts Council, and I don't know about the $30,000 mark. I see they took 10% less last year, $27,000, but I'm certainly going to do what I can to support the funding for the Arts Council.
Thank you, supervisors. Seeing no other supervisors speak, we're going to go on to item... Supervisor Colfax.
Thank you. When we're talking about $30,000 or $27,000 in an ideal world, we would probably have a Department of Arts and Culture. We don't have that. We fortunately have a great library, and I hope we can continue to support it at the level it needs to be supported. But I think Supervisor Pinches points out here, this is a great program. It is economically so significant. It is one of our natural resources in Mendocino County, so to speak. So along with Supervisor Pinches, I would like to express my very, very strong support for this. I think a wonderful presentation, by the way, making all the points, hitting all the spots. Good work. Thank you.
Agree strongly with you, Supervisor Colfax. Thank you for your comments, and thank you, everyone, for the presentation. We'll go on to our agenda item number 6B. It was a timed item for 11:15. It's a presentation of the 2009 Mendocino County Crop Report, an update on the situation with the European grapevine moth quarantine in Mendocino County. Ag Commissioner, please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Tony Linegar, Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. As you said, my primary reason appearing before you today is to formally present you with the 2009 Mendocino County Crop Report, and I'll say a few words about the 2009 crop. In many years, I would characterize 2009 as a rebound from 2008. For those of you that recall, 2008 was a terrible year for agriculture with the smoke and the devastating frost. So in 2009, we saw a lot of the crops return to their normal yields per acre. There were a couple of exceptions. Apples had actually done really well in 2008 because they bloom later than when we had our killing frost, so they actually had a record crop in 2008. So as with apples, you rarely have two big crops in a row, so it was a little lighter in 2009. Some of the things to point out of note would be the pear acreage is continuing to decline. We had about 550 acres come out of production in 2009. So although our yields were up for pears in 2009 because of the reduction in acreage, the overall value for the pear crop went down from 15 million to about 10 million. We have just started this year's pear harvest. It looks very good. The fruit is very good-sized this year. One of the problems we had last year is we had a lot of small fruit. When it gets below about 2 and 3/8 of an inch, not even the canneries will take it. So we left a lot of fruit on the trees last year for the pear crop because it was too small, hundreds of tons of fruit. Also, last year with the pears, a lot of growers two-picked. In other words, they picked twice because they had picked the big fruit, irrigate, go back and try to pick again to try to maximize the yield because we had so much small fruit. But as I said, we've already started the Bartlett harvest for this year. The red pears have already been harvested this year. The crop looks real good. There's a lot better size. We had a little bit of hail damage in the valley, but overall, very good. On the timber, as you may have read already, this 2009 was a record-low year for timber production for Mendocino County, and that's for as long as we've been keeping the records, which was 1965. So with a gross value of 25 million, that is a very significant reduction. On the brighter side of things, we already are looking better for 2010. A lot of foresters have been put back to work, and there's timber being harvested. So that's looking like it's going to turn back upward, thankfully. The grape market, I should comment, is very, very difficult right now. There is a glut of grapes on the market. Last year was a very difficult year for a lot of growers. I would estimate we had maybe 5,000 to 8,000 tons that went unharvested last year because they didn't have a buyer. This year is certainly worse than that. There's a lot of fruit out there that is not yet sold. One of the other elements that enters into the picture here is the advent of what we call custom crushing. So when a grower can't sell their fruit, they'll pay to have it crushed and pay to store the wine, and then they'll try to sell the wine the following year. So that also affects the market because we have a lot of people with wine from last year that they've been storing at these facilities, that they have sold, and that lessens the need for wineries to go out and purchase fruit this year. So it's difficult right now in the grape market, and we're hopeful that the fruit will be sold by the end of the season. Let's see. I guess I will jump to the European grapevine moth situation, starting out with the good news. We have not trapped a European grapevine moth in Mendocino County since May 24th. So that's really good news. We've recorded one negative generation of trapping that just ended. We are now in the third generation of the moth, which started on August 8th. The federal government has not yet indicated how many generations of negative trapping will be necessary to remove us from the quarantine. A lot of the conditions of the quarantine have been changing rapidly as new areas find the moth. This past week, Lodi found two moths, and for those of you that aren't aware, Lodi is a major grape-producing area in the state. What I've learned through this process is not everything is based on biology. There's a lot of politics involved here, and certain wine-growing regions have a lot more clout than Mendocino County, and I don't think that comes as a surprise to anybody, Lodi and Napa being two of those areas. But we're gearing up now for the harvest. We've issued over 250 compliance agreements to wineries, growers, harvesters, and haulers of quarantined fruit to get them in compliance with the quarantine restrictions. Later today, you'll see a contract come before you for $104,000 from the state, and that will be for the enforcement of the quarantine. One thing I would mention is when we did our work plan for the quarantine enforcement, we always project what we might need because in our experience, if you have to go back later and ask for more money, it gets very difficult. So we ask for more than we think we're going to need. So I would bring to your attention that even though the contract's for $104,000, we don't anticipate spending all of that money. We've had a lot of grower cooperation throughout this process, and I think that's one of the things that's going to help us be the first county to eradicate European grapevine moth in California, is that we've had tremendous cooperation. We are a very tight-knit ag community. We have great leadership at the industry level. So we're confident that we can eradicate the moth and be out of the quarantine restrictions, hopefully by next harvest. One thing that you'll hear a lot is as Sonoma and Napa, they're going to be involved in this quarantine for some years to come. It'll remain to be seen how long, but as wineries progress through this, they're recognizing that the cost of handling this quarantined fruit is expensive. You have to haul the green waste off. Equipment has to be washed. There are extra costs incurred at the winery level for handling this fruit. So we're hoping that in the future, if we can eradicate this moth, this will be an extra selling point for our grapes, is that they're not from a quarantined area and they don't require special handling. So I guess I would leave it there, unless the board has some questions.
Board members.
And I did, there are hard copies of the crop report here.
Thank you. Supervisor Pinches.
Tony, maybe this is just a comment. As a livestock producer in this county, the livestock business seems to be kind of on a rebound. But just as a side note, the Colfax Ranch out of Boonville, Mickey and David Colfax, Mickey just went to the state fair and took top billing with their goats over there, and I just wanted to mention that. I think that's a real... As a livestock producer in this county, I'm really proud of that fact that we had a local producer, small producer in Mendocino County, go to the state fair and take the top awards. So congratulations to the Colfax Ranch.
And goats in general are a commodity that is really picking up steam in Mendocino County. There's a lot more goat production than there has been previously. It's actually been one of the livestock crops that we thought of breaking out and starting to list individually rather than lump it in. One thing we did do this year was we included hay in the crop report, which we've never done before, to break it out. We've always lumped it in with all the other field crops. One of the reasons we did that is because during the drought, growers became eligible for reimbursements from the federal government. These reimbursements would be based on the yields. Since we didn't have hay broken out in our crop report, we could not be reimbursed on the production rates of Mendocino County. So the Farm Service Agency had to use Sonoma County numbers, which can be quite a bit lower in hay yields. So working with FSA, we decided we'd try to break out hay this year and see if in the future that might help us in that way. So, okay.
And as a hay producer of grass hay, I appreciate that very much. And we're going to go to public comment. So have a seat, and anyone from the public wanting to comment, please come forward. It'd be on this agenda item. Seeing no one, comes back to the board Supervisor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Linegar, I just wanted to reference for the public, the item you talked about that will be on our consent calendar, item number 413 regarding the European grape moth. Just for clarification, that this is an amount to exceed 104,000, and it's money coming into the county from the state of California, which will assist in quarantine enforcement in Mendocino County. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that's money through your efforts that the county's obtaining to do this important work.
Yes. It's basically a complete wash. We're hiring people to perform these activities, and the government's going to pay for it 100%.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Smith for pointing that out. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on to our 11:30 timed item, and that is the Consent Calendar for the Water Agency. We need to adjourn from the board and of supervisors and convene as the Mendocino County Water Agency Board of Directors. Okay. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Yes, it has.
Is there any comment, supervisors, on item 9A1, and that is Acceptance of the Board of Directors' Response to the 2009-2010 Grand Jury Report, Lobby's Lawsuits and Legislation? Okay, seeing no comment from the board, anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come forward on this consent item. Seeing no one, comes back to the board. Board members.
Do we need to make a motion or just accept it?
We do need to make a motion, and there is a recommended motion to accept the Water Agency Board of Directors' response.
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Supervisor Pinches, seconded by Supervisor Colfax. Comment to the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, hearing none. You now as vote. Okay. Then we have Agenda Item 9A2A, Water Agency General Manager's Report. Mr. Roland Sanford, can you go forward on that, please?
All right. Good morning, and in the interest of the time, I will make it very short. I would just like to say that we have now finally completed the draft, Ukiah Valley Area Plan Water Supply Assessment. It is being reviewed now by the local water purveyors at Lafco, the Farm Bureau, and a few other interested stakeholders, and we'll be incorporating their comments as they come in. We will be having a meeting, a group meeting, like we did previously sometime here in the next week or two. So with, I think, again, in the interest of time, unless there's any other questions about other projects, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Supervisors, do you have questions?
Yes.
Supervisor Pinches.
Roland, what is any communication with the Boy Scouts on the Scout Lake Project?
The ball is in our court. We need to respond to their... We got their comments on the partnership agreement, and the ball is in our court now to respond back to them with basically our countercomments. And that is something admittedly that with the water supply assessment that was put on hold, but we'll be back on that as well as with some Prop 84 grant stuff.
Okay. So that's coming to the top of the...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor McCowan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the work you've done in getting out the Ukiah Valley Water Assessment. I have to confess, I should eat a little bit of crow because at the Russian River Flood Control District a week ago from Monday...
Your mic, John, please.
Is that on?
I think it's on.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So the question came up, gee, when is that assessment going to come out? And I said, well, you know, it keeps getting put off.
John. Still.
It keeps getting... The assessment keeps getting put off and put off. It's probably going to get put off again the next day. You sent out the email of the draft, but the question I have is it's labeled a draft. Do you intend to receive comments to that and then refine it and then make it officially available to the board?
Exactly.
And do you have a timeframe for that?
Presumably shortly after the Labor Day holiday, and it will depend on how quickly we get our comments in from the water districts and such. So, but yeah, so say mid-September.
Thank you. And I have gotten some feedback that people think it's far improved over the previous version that the consultant prepared.
Fortunately, the bar was set pretty low.
Supervisor Colfax.
This rather quick response, but we had a presentation last week, I think, or the week before with regard to the gauge in Anderson Valley. I've had a number of calls since then from people who feel that that is something they want to see continued. Have you been able to review the possible sourcing of relative... Have you been able to review the possible sourcing of relatively small amount, but significant amount of money out of your budget, or how we would handle that?
Yes, just quickly for those that may not be familiar, the Water Agency over the last four or five years has been, along with Mendocino Redwood Company, the local sponsor of the Navarro River USGS Gauge, and this is a significant financial commitment. The local sponsor's share is nearly $14,000. Given our economic times, we had put the word out that, you know, look, we don't know if we even have $7,000 that we could contribute towards this, so we've been shaking the bushes, so to speak. We have been in contact with several groups, and it does look like we will be able to secure some additional funding. And one of the things we are also looking at doing is setting up a special account to receive even modest donations. So I'm much more hopeful now that we'll be able to continue to be the local sponsor there. Our financial commitment will be much less, but we'll be able to retain the gauge.
Good news.
Supervisor Pinches?
$14,000 to operate, or that gauge sounds to me a considerable amount of money, and the U.S. Geological Service has these all over the United States. Is it their policy to get a local, or normally in their budget process, don't they pay for the total management of these gauges? Why did all of a sudden the obligation of the funding come down to Mendocino County?
Historically, the USGS did fund and operate these gauges solely, you know, through their own funding stream, but, you know, about six years ago, they started, they basically said, look, we're going to, we don't have enough money. We're going to shut down these gauges unless we can get local sponsor support. And so the process really started about five years ago. I certainly, I have, just to make you feel worse, that $14,000, the actual operating cost of the gauge is nearly $23,000, which is, in my mind, remarkably high, but it is what it is. It is their gauge. And suffice to say that this has been going on for about six years now, and I think unfortunately it will only continue, because the outlook for USGS's budget is about as favorable as ours.
Maybe Roland, sometime, maybe we could get a report on what the status of the gauges, because I know in the river, they've been gauging that river since the, way back, 30s or 40s. Maybe if you could just kind of give us a short status report on the gauges and throughout the county and what's going on?
Sure, that'd be fine. And actually, late September, beginning of October, we would be coming forward with the contract with USGS. I don't know if that might be a good time to give you the full story, or if you want, we can put out a memo.
If you can.
Okay, all right.
Okay. It is a request. Okay. Any other questions, supervisors? Seeing none, we're going to move forward to the item 9A2B, Discussion on Possible Action: Initiation of Mendocino County Green Business Certification Program. Mr. Sanford, do you want to go forward with the rest of the introduction?
Okay, absolutely. A little bit of background here. For about the last 20 years, the California Department of Toxic Substances has been promoting and assisting counties and cities with the development of green business certification programs. And the purpose of these programs is to honor and recognize businesses that utilize environmentally friendly practices, and through this recognition, provide the program participants with additional marketing opportunities, not to mention the fact that implementation, frequently implementation of these practices actually saves the businesses money. In a nutshell, the program participants pledge to comply with all applicable environmental regulations and also to meet the program standards with regard to conserving resources, preventing pollution, and minimizing waste. And the way it works is there's a certification process, which begins with an audit, compliance is verified, and typically certification is for a three-year period. Now, getting more locally here, representatives from several local businesses in Yukaya Valley, and several folks are here today, have approached the Water Agency and the county, and basically requested that the county sponsor a green business certification program in conjunction with other community organizations. And the Water Agency, we expressed an interest from the onset to their request, due in part to the fact that we have a water conservation component and a stormwater education and public outreach component that we already do. And I think, as most of you know, the stormwater component, that public outreach and education is a mandated requirement, part of our Phase II NPDS stormwater permit. And so we view this as an opportunity to potentially satisfy some of our stormwater education requirements, as well as do something for the business community. And so that is what has brought us very much into this potential program here. And just a side note, historically, the county, through the Water Agency, has funded the public outreach, the NPDS work, to the tune of about $5,000 to $10,000 per year. So, as I'll get to in a minute, implementation of this program will help meet that objective and offset some of those costs. Very quickly, because I know that we're already behind schedule and you've got a long day, the proposed program was developed by a committee consisting of representatives from the county, local businesses, the environmental community, and the Mendocino Economic Development and Finance Corporation. And the program itself is patterned after the Bay Area Green Business Certification Programs. And I won't, again, I won't go into details unless there are questions there. Our partners, and this is certainly by no means a complete list, but our partners include the Mendocino County Solid Waste Authority, of course, the Water Agency, the Small Business Energy Alliance, Mendocino County Energy Watch, and the City of Yukaya. And the way the program will work is that businesses will submit an application and an application fee to the Water Agency Program Coordinator, along with a completed checklist, which they're provided with, where they identify the things that they're doing and/or not doing. And the Program Coordinator will review the checklist, will schedule an audit, which will be made up of team members from the Water Agency and other organizations as appropriate, to basically verify that everything on the checklist is in fact being done, that has been checked, or if it's not, then to identify those deficiencies that would need to be fulfilled in order to achieve certification. You pass this test, so to speak, and you become certified, you get a green business logo, you get a certificate to display, and also on the Water Agency's website, we will have a webpage dedicated to the Green Business Certification Program. You'll be identified there as well. Wrapping it up here, this program is very modest in scope, at least at the onset. We anticipate, over the next couple of years, maybe 20 to 40 businesses participating in it. However, depending on the level of interest and funding availability, it would be relatively easy to expand in terms of its scope and also how aggressively we put the word out. In terms of funding, that was obviously a key issue here. Funding for the startup and implementation of the program has been pledged from the Foundation for Commerce and Education, and the agency will use these funds, roughly $5,000 a year for the next three years, plus the application fee monies to administer the program. And so, as we told the program participants, one of the essentials here is that we don't have any additional money that we can throw at this, that we're going to need to get the money from outside sources to get it up and running. So in summary, just to head down the homestretch here, implementation of the Mendocino County Green Business Certification Program has been requested by local businesses who feel that they will benefit from the program. In terms of, the program itself will be funded from outside sources, and the county benefits in that some of our, not a huge amount, but some of our mandated stormwater permit requirements, the education component, then is partially offset by implementing this program there. So we feel very good that this is something that it benefits the county, takes care of some of our mandated requirements, and it does something that the local businesses are requesting there. And so with that, the recommendation is to authorize the General Manager to sign the grant agreement with the Foundation for Commerce and Education, and to initiate and administer the Mendocino County Green Business Certification Program. And I'll stop there for comments, and I also know there's a few folks in the audience that may want to comment on this.
Supervisor Pinches?
So, with your limited staff over there, you can operate? I mean, this $5,000 is going to go to pay your staff, right?
Pay our staff, or the other options?
Can you make a three, this is a three-year program?
This is a three-year program.
Can you make a commitment to run that program within your, within the staff for $5,000?
Yes, yes. In part because if we aren't doing this program, we would be doing other public outreach stuff pertaining to NPDS, so it's not really, it's not really an additional task, per se. It's a different kind of task, and it meets, satisfies one of our other objectives, which is this stormwater education.
Because when you're talking about salaries and whatnot, $5,000 isn't a very big program.
No, this is not a big program at all.
Okay, seeing no other comment, I invite the public to speak. I do not have a speaker form. Someone wishes to address this issue, please come forward, state your name for the record, and know you have three minutes.
My name is Denise Rombanis from the Savings Bank. Can you hear me okay? That's R-O-U-M-B-A-N-I-S, if you need the spelling. I'm here to express strong support for this program, not only for myself personally, but for the Savings Bank. Green Business Program in Mendocino County would be really an excellent thing for a lot of reasons. The reason I got involved, it's been over a year ago, because Savings Bank formed a Go Green Work Group, and we wanted to raise awareness about recycling and reusing and reducing waste in our organization, and to launch a campaign to expand electronic banking. We felt really good about our progress, and we kind of wanted to celebrate it publicly, and so we started looking into a green certification program. And we found a lot of organizations out there on the internet that will certify you, and you can pay a fee and get a sticker for your window. However, the Green Business Program sponsored by the Cal EPA, or the Department of Toxic Waste, their programs are very comprehensive and meaningful. They require compliance with all applicable environmental laws, and they use detailed checklists to perform onsite inspections, which is really a very big difference between the other programs that we looked into. In the Bay Area, successful programs started in the 1990s and have since spread throughout the state. So last fall, we began meeting with others in the community who might be interested in the program for Mendocino County. Don Bolick at EDFC shared our passion and agreed to help develop a program and administer it for a few years until we could find a permanent home at the county level. After months of planning and decision-making on the part of several dedicated individuals, things evolved, and we're here today seeking your approval for the Water Agency to take the program forward. Savings Bank strongly supports the program, because businesses who become certified will become caretakers of our county's health and environment by pledging to stay green. They will set an example for other businesses. They will inspire individuals to do more for the environment, be publicly recognized for their efforts and commitment, strengthen their bottom line by increasing operating efficiencies, improve employee morale and company pride, and likely have a marketing edge over their competition. The program is a positive and healthy step for our county that we can all be proud of, and I'd like to publicly thank everyone who's been part of developing the program for Mendocino County, especially Matt McCarron from the Cal EPA, Don Bolick at EDFC, Katie Kite, Mike Sweeney, Roger Foote, Dennis Slotah, and Roland Sanford, and thank you for your consideration today. And I would just like to expand on something that Roland said about the funding. Savings Bank is planning on sponsoring the program, and we will commit $5,000 a year for three years running, and we hope to get many other businesses to also contribute $5,000 a year for five years, for three years running. So hopefully, we can amass about $50,000 that will help the Water Agency to get off the ground for the first three years, and with any luck, we'll have room in the budget going forward after that to keep the program going. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will say that Mr. Mike Sweeney couldn't be here today and did submit an email in support of the program. Anyone else that desires to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we bring it back to the board, board members?
Madam Chair, I'll move the recommended action.
Second. Okay, I do want to read the recommended action. Can you do that, Supervisor McCowen, into the record?
Perhaps the clerk could.
I can.
Okay, I can. Authorize General Manager to sign grant agreement with Foundation for Commerce and Education Incorporated, and to initiate and administer Mendocino County Green Business Certification Program. Moved by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Smith. Okay, any other comments? Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that this is an excellent example of a public-private partnership, with the Savings Bank coming forward with their very strong statement and their financial support. And also just to note for the record that what we're voting on is the grant agreement, so additional funds hopefully will be forthcoming from the Foundation for Commerce and Education Incorporated, that will be a financial contributor to this. So I think it's an excellent example of where we need to be going in this county, and hope that we have unanimous support for this.
Okay. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Posed, hearing none. It is unanimous. Now we're going to move on, but I do need to know if there's any public expression for the Water Agency. Please come forward. Seeing no one, are there other discussion topics? I know Supervisor Pinches brought up one, and that is a report to come back in September on gauges. Are there any other matters from staff?
No, not at this time.
Okay. And I don't know of any other business, so we're going to adjourn as the Mendocino County Water Agency Board of Directors, and we will reconvene as the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors. We are not going to recess for lunch until we have the consent calendar. Karen Anne, is she still in the room? No. Then I think that, I don't know if she went to lunch or not. It would not be fair to her to go forward with this, because she identified herself as a speaker to the Consent Calendar, County Council.
You know, the boards can move forward with the consent calendar at this point. You shouldn't hold up the process for citizen input. If they're not here, they're not here.
We don't know if that person would come back.
Right.
We will go to item number four, and that is our consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of-
Supervisor, I need to ask the clerk, has proper notice been established?
Yes, it has.
Supervisor, but it has been established?
Yes.
Okay, are there any items to be pulled for separate consideration?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
There is a motion by Supervisor McCowen. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Pinches to approve those items on the consent calendar. I want to ask for public comment. Anyone desiring to speak on any item on the consent calendar, please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, it's back to the board. We do have a motion for approval of the full consent calendar. No items pulled for separate consideration, clerk? Oh, thank you very much. Oh, Supervisor Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to mention the addendum that we have, so the public's aware. That includes item number 4-14 on consent. So I'm assuming that the motion will include the addendum.
Yes.
Okay, and- Okay, and checking with County Council earlier, it's an administrative change as a result anyway, so, okay. Okay, so we have the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Unanimous vote. All consent calendar items, including the addendum, goes forward. Okay. We're going to adjourn for lunch and we will be coming back in, reconvene at 1:30. I got that time right, I guess. Hello, everyone. We're going to convene as the Mendocino County Redevelopment Agency. And we are going to go to item 9B1, which is the presentation of Redevelopment Agency Work Plan. Adoption of Resolution Accepting and Approving the Work Plan. Further Approving an Amendment to the Cooperation and Repayment Agreement Between the County and the Redevelopment Agency and Taking Related Actions. So, Mr. Dunnecliff, do you want to get started and further introduce the item? Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Dunnecliff with the Executive Office. And today, we're going to be talking just a little bit about the Redevelopment Agency of the County of Mendocino, or what I'll be referring to as the RDA, and some of the recent accomplishments and successes, and talk a little bit about where we might go. And ultimately, we're eliminating blight and improving the community. And for background, the county's RDA encompasses one project area that's broken into three subareas, and we generally refer to these as South Ukiah, North Ukiah, and Calpella. It's governed by the Board of Supervisors, sitting as the agency's Board of Directors. And the RDA's activities are guided by the five-year implementation plan, which was adopted in 2008. RDA funds are independent of the county's general fund, and RDA expenditures are required to benefit the project area in a manner consistent with the implementation plan. The adopted goals of the RDA are to ensure a range of quality housing choices for lower-income households, rehabilitate the physical and natural environment, and secure adequate infrastructure for the safe and efficient delivery of services and people, eliminate environmental and visual blight on both public and private parcels, and align the area as consistent with the adjacent communities in functional and economic terms. And partnerships to date have been and will continue to be key to RDA successes and accomplishments. These have included the County of Mendocino, City of Ukiah Redevelopment Agency, Mendocino College, Ukiah Unified School District, community groups, and nonprofit organizations. And to illustrate this and to start talking about some of the recent successes, this is a picture of the RCHDC, or Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation's Lakewood Homes subdivision. It's approximately a 48-home subdivision of self-help affordable housing. And this sign, that you can't see all that well, shows all the entities that have funded this, and the Redevelopment Agency is in that list. But it also really illustrates how many organizations it takes to accomplish some of these projects. Going into the RDA's contribution to this project, there was a $100,000 RDA commitment made to assist four households. Two of those households have been identified to date, and one of those homes is currently under construction. Another thing that the RDA's been successful at is contracting with planning and building to operate a code enforcement program within the project area. And this is a picture from one of those cleanups. So one example of success is illustrated through these before pictures that you can see here. And this project came to the agency's attention through code enforcement. They felt there were some significant violations. And because of the RDA contract, code enforcement was able to make this a priority. And in this case, there was actually a cooperative landowner, and cleanup was commenced pretty quickly, and it involved a lot of heavy equipment to actually clean the site. This one picture gives you some perspective with where we are. This is the Ken Fowler Auto Dealership, the old Ken Fowler Auto Dealership. And you can see really the enormous piles of trash that did exist. Some cleanup pictures here. Ultimately, 24 vehicles were removed from the site. There was 150 cubic yards of trash removed, and there were significant amounts of construction, recyclables, and metals that were pulled out of there as well. And you can see the end result, the community benefit here was fairly dramatic in this North State Street Improvements or the Gateway Revitalization. This was a great project that the Mendocino County Department of Transportation was working on, and we were able to be relatively innovative in putting local funds into this and helping to make sure that it happened. The RDA did contribute funding to this, and what was really innovative is Mendocino College was able to make funds available for this project as well. And I've got just a couple of before-and-after pictures for you on this as well to show you what's fairly dramatic improvements. The top two photos are before-and-after of the Hall Road Overcrossing, and you can see it was a very constricted area. This picture has a truck on one of the lanes, and there was literally no room, you know, for pedestrians or bicyclists. There's now a great three-lane throughway with a very safe route for pedestrians and bicyclists to access the college and enter the community. These bottom two pictures are looking down the hill, where again, you can see the widening that DOT accomplished, and you see on the after, we've got a nice bike lane now that was added in. Alex Rohrbach Center's Gymnasium, this was a high priority of the board last year, the Board of Directors. The Alex Rohrbach Center has been a strong community effort that the County of Mendocino and the City of Ukiah and the School District all contributed substantial funds towards. But completion of the gymnasium, they'd come up a little short with funding to actually accomplish that. So last year, the county RDA, the city RDA, and the Ukiah Unified School District contributed a total of $1.5 million to finish the inside of this building. So at this point, building construction is expected to finish in January, with the bleachers installed at the end of March. And we're looking forward to having an after photo for you up here that's full of kids playing basketball. As far as looking forward to identifying and addressing needs within the project area, the work plan that's being brought forward contains four projects and five studies that are intended to help address the goals and priorities of the agency. This first one is a Safe Routes to Schools project, DOT, the Mendocino County Department of Transportation that would like to complete. And this is, the Calpella Elementary School currently does not have a continuous sidewalk or bike lane to access it from the higher-density housing that exists within what you'd call downtown Calpella. So the project would include continuous sidewalks and a bike lane down the hill on Moore Street, and then continue, I guess it's on the west side of North State Street, and ensure that the community had a safe pathway there. And the cost on this is $40,000. The RDA share would be $40,000 of a $400,000 project. Pedestrian Safety Improvements at Grace Hudson Elementary School. This is one of the primary crosswalks you can see here, at one of the two intersections that are available there. And there's really nothing to distinguish that crosswalk or that walkway for motorists that are zooming through the area. And so the Department of Transportation is going to be completing some traffic calming measures that are going to include what's called bulbouts, which is where you see the curb extended, and the curb in the sidewalk extended out into the roadway to narrow it a little bit and make pedestrians more visible as they walk out to cross the street. The RDA's ability to participate here includes what's called button-activated pedestrian warning lights and active school zone signs. So the DOT project on this is $240,000. The RDA's complement to it would cost approximately $54,000. Sewer Infrastructure Expansion. The Ukiah Valley Sanitation District has identified a fairly large area within the North Ukiah Project area that doesn't currently have public sewer service. And what's interesting about it is, based on the topography, there was sewer service north of the area and south of the area, and even a little bit east. But the corridor essentially between Ackerman Creek and Hensley Creek was unserved. And so the businesses that are in there right now are using private septic systems. So the sanitation district spent about $320,000 to install Phase One infrastructure under the roadway in anticipation of expanding service. Currently, that infrastructure does not hook into anything. And this was done because of a Department of Transportation prohibition on cutting asphalt after it's been freshly laid or improved. So the sanitation district has requested $20,000 from the agency to assist in planning for Phases Two and Three, which would be actual implementation and hooking up of the pipeline that's been installed. It's anticipated that there would be an additional request for partnership funding that would come forward once those Phases Two and Three had been identified and a plan of action had been put in place. Local Match Funds to Implement Intersection Improvements. This ties into the next studies that we're going to be going over, but it's intended to make $200,000 available to actually improve some of the, and implement some of the designs that the RDA, it's requested that the RDA pursue. Major Intersection Rehabilitation Design. The intersections at North State Street and Empire Drive and North State Street and KUKI Lane, which are just essentially a block apart, the Department of Transportation has identified that they've got poor geometrics, poor traffic signal timing, and they're constricted, all of which leads to congestion in a relatively vital corridor. And so the work plan calls for plans, specs, and an estimate, or PSE is what I'm going to refer to it as, to be created, which will facilitate grant funds or additional dollars to be brought in to actually make these improvements. The Gateway Project Design Component. This is the newly widened roadway, and this is Hensley Creek Road here, the gateway to the college or the entrance to the college. There is a commitment has been made to install safety lighting and crosswalks to try to draw a little bit more attention to the fact that it's a heavily-traveled intersection that's currently relatively nondescript. We need about $15,000 to design or to create the PSE, the plan, specs, and the estimate. With this particular project, there will then be college funds available for implementation and construction. Community Core Improvement Design. This is in Calpella, and the intersection of Moore Street and North State Street is a relatively, there's a lack of basic infrastructure at this intersection. There's no curb-gutter sidewalk, there's no crosswalks. And as far as a crossroads that really defines the heart of a community, it's fairly nondescript right now. So the work plan calls for doing plans, specs, and an estimate for improving this intersection. One thing that's interesting about this opportunity is the Safe Routes to School project that I mentioned earlier will improve this corner here. It'll provide curb-gutter sidewalk and a bike lane. The Department of Transportation would like to improve the Moore Street Bridge over the Russian River down here. So when you, there's actually a great opportunity to maximize return on investment by implementing these improvements or designing these improvements and then implementing them with other projects that are happening nearby. It'll ultimately reduce the cost of the improvements and increase the benefit to the community. Infrastructure Needs Assessment. On this item, I thought this picture was relatively appropriate. You can't see too well on this slide, but there's wires that were hanging down from this pole. And the redevelopment project area, to make sure that we're addressing some of the highest priority and most core needs, it's desired to get a good sense as to what the infrastructure needs are by looking at it comprehensively. One example that I like to come up with on this is the board has decided that it's a priority to support the expansion of broadband internet service throughout the county. For the most part, it's very difficult to come up with any local match funds to actually implement a project. Within the RDA, though, provides the opportunity to use local funds to pursue grant opportunities if we're able to document any needs in that regard. The College Water Project Phase Two Feasibility Study. In 2007, the Water Agency funded a Phase One feasibility study to try to, on what we call the College Water Project. This is land that's owned by the Mendocino College Foundation, and it was in part of an effort to expand the supply of water storage capacity within the Ukiah Valley. The Phase One study showed that it might be feasible to create a reservoir to store between 500 acre-feet and 1,500 acre-feet of water. The reason that the RDA is interested in this and the benefit to the project area would be the potential lifting of a moratorium that exists within the North Ukiah Redevelopment Project area. Since this work plan was created, there's a new development that needs to be addressed to the board, but I think that it's ultimately something that we're going to need to have a wait-and-see on. The Russian River Flood Control District has made an additional water allocation available to the Millview Water District. At this time, it's not expected that that alone will lift the moratorium, but the Millview Water District has requested an additional water supply on top of what they were just, what they just recently received. And it is possible that that additional water supply, which will total 750 acre-feet, might lift the moratorium. At that point, the agency's reasoning for funding this study would go away if that moratorium is in fact lifted. Because this is something that's happening right now, and there's no guarantee that the additional allocation will be granted, and there's no guarantee that even if the entire 750 acre-feet is made available, that it will lift the moratorium, we're proposing that we proceed with the work plan as submitted with the recognition and realization that if that moratorium is in fact lifted, this Phase Two feasibility study would not be funded by the agency. It doesn't appear that that would be necessary at that point. So just wanted to end with a picture of blight and ask the board if there are any questions, comments, or concerns.
Board members, Supervisor Pinches?
Steve, that, going back to that college reservoir site, it's mentioned it may create a 586 acre-foot water supply.
500 to 1,500.
500 to 1,500. And if you draw that down, because this would be sort of a, there's going to be some sort of a fishery mitigation or something there. So if you probably just take 50% away, so that means that you could be only creating about 200, 250 acre-foot of water. And my, I kind of classify those areas as kind of mud holes. And it only has the ability to supply basically that small service area there, whereas the Scout Lake Project has the ability to serve the redevelopment area, the Calpella area, Redwood Valley area, maybe Brook Trails and Willets areas. So, and there's a question of whether redevelopment dollars are appropriate or reusable in that areas. But it's my position that, I think that for overall the county, that putting money into the Scout Lake Project makes a lot more sense than putting money into a very limited college reservoir site. I just wanted to make that more of a statement than a question.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I have very serious concerns about putting money into the college reservoir site for a variety of reasons. The amount of water that to be realized there, as Supervisor Pinches says, should it ultimately prove out? And we're spending, proposing to spend $150,000 just to do the feasibility study. Any water there is years into the future, even if everything goes well. So I think it's a very speculative use of our limited redevelopment funds, and particularly with regard to the recent action by the Russian River Flood Control District in saying they have water available, the action by the Millview Water District in saying that they accept that water. And I believe the first 550 acre-feet that is being discussed is a firm offer of water from the Flood Control District, and Millview has stated that they accept that water. They're going to have to go through an environmental review process, in any event, but the environmental review process to contract for already-available water is going to be greatly simplified over the process to go through environmental review, not only for what would the impact of that water be to Millview, but what would the impact of the college reservoir project be? Additionally, the 200 acre-feet of additional water that the Flood District is saying might be available, it's my understanding that there is a great likelihood that that water will be available. So if the justification for this project is to provide water to Millview, and Millview is already being provided water, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to, in my view, squander this... squander this small amount of redevelopment money that we have, when, as you've correctly pointed out in the rest of your presentation, there's various serious infrastructure needs, both in the North Ukiah area, the South Ukiah area. And I think the money would be far better spent to do additional intersection improvements or sidewalk improvements or drainage improvements, anything that will either produce -- improve the safety, the aesthetics, or the development potential of those areas. So, I personally think it would be a misuse of the $150,000 to target it towards a very speculative project that offers no immediate prospect of return. And another concern I have is that this entire presentation was put together by staff, as far as I understand, without going out and doing any kind of a community process to solicit community input. This is, to my knowledge, really the first public discussion of the issue. And I'm sure that Mr. Dunnecliff will correct me if I'm wrong on that.
And is it okay if I?
Absolutely respond to the questions. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to make one statement, that because the funding, the Phase 2 feasibility study would only be funded if the moratorium was not lifted, I think that it wouldn't necessarily be squandering money at that -- it would be squandering money if the study was -- went forward and the moratorium was lifted. But with the caveat that the study wouldn't go forward unless the moratorium still remained in effect, I think it might mitigate that statement slightly. With regard to the public process on this, the redevelopment agency's five-year implementation plan, which the beginning of that process happened before I came into the office, but we contracted with Nuestra Casa to do door-to-door polling to gauge the opinion and the needs and the perspective of the residents of the redevelopment project area. The implementation plan was then created with that input, and this is intended to be consistent with the implementation plan. So, while there hasn't been extensive public process or really any public process with regard to this work plan, it's intended to, you know, enable the agency to implement and create the -- what the community said they wanted as the five-year implementation plan was created.
And I believe that this -- the water project itself is located within the fifth district? Is that correct?
I don't know on that.
Mendocino County?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay. Supervisor Pinches?
As I mentioned about the benefits of the Scout Lake Project, even though it's not in the redevelopment area, it certainly has the potential of supplying water to the redevelopment area. So, do we need an illegal opinion if that is an appropriate use of redevelopment dollars?
Coco?
Or is it appropriate?
It's outside of the redevelopment area. There's a boundary, and we're only limited to that boundary. So, you wouldn't be able to -- you would not be able to use funds.
But the project would benefit the redevelopment area.
That's fine, but it's not within the redevelopment area boundary. That's the key.
So, even though it's a benefit, it can't be?
It's got to be within the redevelopment area boundary.
I would like to ask, is Lake Mendocino Coyote Dam, is it within the redevelopment boundary?
No.
No, it isn't.
Okay. I wanted to get that clarified. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm really not satisfied with the explanation that we won't go forward with the money for the feasibility study if the moratorium has been lifted, because, as I stated, there will be a process to go through, an environmental review process, before Millview can make use of the water that they say they will contract for. We don't know how long that process could take. So, we could release the funds, do the feasibility study, and then the moratorium would ultimately be lifted. And I just don't think it's -- now, if we want to put a qualification in there that the funds will not be released until Millview has completed the environmental review process to see if it can make use of the 550 acre feet and the potential 200 additional, and that those additional 200 acre feet will be available, let that process run its course, and if there's still a moratorium after that, then release the funds. I'd be a little more willing to go along with it, although I will still maintain we have better use of those funds. That's more an argument for my board members.
Okay. Board members, any other comment?
Well, yeah.
Questions? And then we're going to go to public input.
We're talking about the -- to put a hole on these -- to bar against county funds to make this -- and that's basically how redevelopment agencies are set up, because it gives them the ability to leverage monies. And I understand that. But do we have to, with all your projects in here, what if we just deleted the College Water Project feasibility study? I mean, don't you have plenty of projects in there to do what you want to do without listing that as one of them?
The work plan was put together.
Because you've got how many projects here? A whole bunch of them?
Yeah. I believe there's four projects and -- four -- actually, five, either five studies and four projects or vice versa.
Well, there's --
Four projects.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them, and then you've got a lot of these safe routes that are contribution, RDA shares. So, do you have to come up to the full amount? Is that what you're looking for, to get the RDA share to be the full amount?
We were working to ensure that the RDA was able to be fully funded. So, we were looking to identify an appropriate number of projects to ensure that the RDA was fully funded.
So, you're including that, basically to leverage the money more than anything, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, and to address the comment about the debt, the RDA is funded to -- there's two mechanisms that essentially cap the revenue that an RDA can receive. One is the maximum amount of tax increment revenue that's generated within the project area. The other one is the amount of debt that the RDA has established. And so, those are the -- essentially, the two moving pieces that you work with to try to ensure that the RDA is fully funded.
I just really have a real hard time earmarking $150,000 in redevelopment dollars to a project that, number one, in my opinion, will never get done, and number two, if it got done, it wouldn't really -- it really wouldn't solve anybody's problem. I mean, to basically, you're funding a mud hole. That's how I've characterized this project for four years now. I mean, it could be as low as 200, 250 acre foot of water. I mean, when you already have a commitment of three times that from a water district? I mean, I just...
And if it's appropriate, I'd like to potentially throw Roland on the hot seat, if there's anything that he feels he could interject, because to an extent, we're talking about some technical aspects of a project that I'm not the expert on.
To get one other point, to get that number, couldn't we just throw in another Department of Transportation project and have the RDA share of $150,000? Wouldn't that get your same goal?
It's very possible, yes.
I'm sure Howard's got a lot of the projects in redevelopment area that he could throw in.
Yeah. There's a possibility then that if we can't decide today, this could come back on another agenda. There's no deadline or?
Well, there's an October 1st deadline for us. So, if we were to bring it back, we need to do it relatively quickly. You know, the first meeting in September.
Okay. I would like Roland Sanford from the Mendocino County Water Agency to please come in the staff position or -- oh, okay.
A couple of words about?
Your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. For the record, my name is Roland Sanford. I'm the manager of the Mendocino County Water Agency. A couple of words about Scout Lake and Coyote Dam and the college project. About eight months ago, we did a presentation here where we ranked the various water storage projects that we were involved with. We did rank Scout Lake as the highest one. The college was the second, and the Coyote Dam feasibility study was third. So, we already have stated that in terms of what we saw as the most desirable projects, and I won't go into all the reasoning there, we had ranked Scout Lake at the highest. In the case of the college project, yeah, one -- certainly, Millview being in a moratorium was part of what made -- makes that project appealing, because the college has some needs and Millview has some needs, and Millview serves the college. The project itself could be -- is not a very big project, as Supervisor Pinches noted. Certainly no larger than 1,500 acre feet of storage. At this point, what is -- what you're trying to do is verify that the geotechnical conditions there are suitable to build any kind of dam. And if they are, the project may become solely a college project. You know, they may decide that they can go with a much smaller reservoir. But yes, we know it's not a huge -- it's not a huge project. What happens with Millview, we don't know yet. But at this point, all we're trying to do is establish whether or not you can even build any dam there of any height, so.
Okay. Any questions? Supervisor McCowen?
Well, not necessarily a question. I think it's been answered. It sounds like we have no agreement regarding how we would share in any future water should this prove out, and I'm reluctant to embark on another project where we commit county funds without having an assurance that we will be in line to receive a benefit.
And certainly, until you prove that you could actually build a project there, you're right, there is no assurance. There's no assurance at this point that that project will ever pan out.
Well, but why not have an agreement upfront that if we're committing funds, if it does pan out, we're going to share in the benefit?
We do have, in principle, that there would be a sharing, but you're absolutely right. There is no agreement yet, and until we could say with confidence that we had a project, we're reluctant to actually finalize an agreement that would give allocations. So, it's just premature.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could just interject on that point as well, simply because?
Put your name back in.
I'm sorry. Steve Dunnecliff, Executive Office. As a function of the RDA, again, to establish benefit to the project area, there would have to be some sort of an agreement in place before the funds were actually released. So, just for clarification, a board action and approval of the work plan today would essentially be given a blessing for staff to go forth and contract for this. The college water project in particular would come back to the board as a contract that had already been essentially pre-authorized, but that would be the opportunity to insert necessary clarifications and conditions.
Supervisor Pinches?
Madam Chair, in order to move this along, if I could get the support of my colleagues, if we could just eliminate this one project, not eliminate it, but take it off this list and replace it with one of, I mean, I'm sure Department of Transportation has many other road projects in the RDA area, replace it for that, to bring us up to the amount, so it would use that $150,000 RDA match. It would get what Steve was looking for, what the goal that he's trying to achieve without committing to $150,000 of RDA money to the college water site.
Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, with the comments we've heard here today, I think I would suggest something along the lines of Supervisor Pinches' idea that, and this would go to Mr. Dunnecliff, would it make sense here today to approve all of the other components of the work plan with the exception of the water project? Then you would bring it back to us, as council has said, probably the first meeting in September, and have an analysis of the water project and perhaps some other competing projects in terms of dollar amounts and relative value to the redevelopment district. I mean, that's the core issue we're supposed to be focusing on. So, can we meet that qualification with respect to benefit easier with another project, I think Supervisor Pinches is possibly suggesting, or would the water project still be the best avenue to do that? So, is that feasible here today, that we approve the rest of the work plan, then you would bring back a supplemental component?
What I would like to suggest, from staff perspective and to save workload, if the board is not excited about the college water project, I would just as soon take that off the table and not do any -- make any attempted analysis in comparing benefit with the water project versus something else. What I would personally like to see is a consent item that comes forward in the -- before October 1st, in the very near future, that addresses some of the more immediate concerns that the board would apparently like to see addressed.
Thank you. I'd like to go to public comment at this point. So, I do not have any speaker forms. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this particular item now before the redevelopment agency? Seeing no one, it comes back to the board. Supervisor Smith?
That I would make the recommended action, the adoption of the resolution as stated, with the exception of the Mendocino College Water Project as discussed here today, removing that from the work plan with staff to return to the board in an appropriate manner for a substitute project at the earliest opportunity.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Supervisor Smith, seconded, excuse me, directors. Director Smith and Director McCowen. Clerk, did you get the motion? Okay. Any other comment, board members? Hearing none. We're going to vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we're going to Agenda Item Number 9B2, and this is other business with the redevelopment agency. Public expression. Anyone has some expression? Redevelopment agency, please come forward. Seeing no one. Are there any other board member comments or topics? Seeing none. Peer staff is busy. Any other matters before the redevelopment agency? Mr. Dunnecliff, do we have any other matters before us for the redevelopment agency?
No other matters. I would like to make sure that County Council is comfortable with the direction that this is going.
Okay.
Yeah. The redevelopment agency had two actions before it today. One was approval of the work plan, and then the second was adoption, approving the amendment to the cooperation and repayment agreement. You took action to address the work plan, but you did not take action to address the amendment to the cooperation and repayment plan. What my question to Mr. Dunnecliff is, if they remove the water project, then that amendment needs to be modified as well, correct?
I would think so.
Yes. So, I would suggest that we bring the amendment back on consent in September at the earliest opportunity. So, Madam Chair, that means that Board of Supervisors Item Number 8B will likewise be continued.
Okay. So, we would not be having a concurrent meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the?
You don't need to do that today.
Redevelopment agency. Okay.
And if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And that amendment will come back with a -- some sort of other infrastructure project which has a RDA contribution of $150,000, and that'll make up the gap, right?
Yes. And just for clarification, in the intervening time, we've been working to try to dial in exactly how much, you know, the dollar value of the projects that we need to bring forward. So, it might not total exactly $150,000, but it will meet the agency's needs.
Is that a percentage contribution, or is that just a dollar contribution? Because a percentage contribution will fluctuate, depends on what -- when you go to build. It goes beyond the PSNEs, but when you go to build, what the construction cost is, right? Or is it just a set dollar match?
Set dollar match.
Okay. Well, then that's easy to plug in then.
Okay. Board members, you understand now where we're at with the whole redevelopment agency. Thank you, staff, very much for all your hard work. So, we will be adjourning the redevelopment agency and reconvening as the Board of Supervisors. And we do have timed item, and that item is Agenda Item Number 7D, review and possible adoption of contract with solid waste of Willets Incorporated to lease and assume operation of county solid waste transfer stations excluding Casper and extend current solid waste of Willets franchise curbside collection contracts to 2024. This is a review and possible action to approve the option agreement for extension of Willets Transfer Station contract. Ms. Angelo, you will take this further, please, in introduction and comment.
Madam Chair, before us today is the contract with solid waste Madam Chair, before us today is the contract with Solid Waste of Willets for five of our transfer stations. This has been a process of negotiations for, actually around 2007, 2008, this process started. And today, we have our DOT Director, Mr. DeShiel, here to answer any questions regarding the process and the contracts before you.
Thank you, and this is where I want to go as chair for this particular item. I received in the last 24 hours probably 60 contacts, it's probably about equal, pro and con, on the issue. And I think much of the information that going to the public was received through emails. And in particular, there was one by Mr. Joel Wildman. That was carried forth as well by Richard Johnson, and with other commentary added. And there was also a very large email sent out by supporters of candidate Hamburg. So I am imagining it was quite a list. Many people advocating to me had misinformation, unfounded fears, and they were very confused about the whole issue. We've been going through this, at least for almost my full year and a half on the board, and previous to that, I believe this has been three years of discussion. And so because of the confusion about the facts and the debated issues, and the debate taking place with this body, I'm going to ask for a comprehensive report from Supervisor McCowen, who did chair the ad hoc. And when we get into further talking about this issue, I'm going to ask supervisors to please state Rule 19, which is Rules of Debate. So Supervisor McCowen, if you want staff to weigh in, that would be very acceptable. But I'm going to let you continue with the introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a process that began over three years ago, and I understand that really in the last week, there's been more public interest in it, more public awareness. It's unfortunate that people have not followed the process from its inception. As Chair Brown requested, I'll try to give something of an overview, although I've been here for less than half of the time that it's been under discussion. So I'm sure Director DeShiel, Director Sweeney can fill in any of the blanks that I will surely leave. This was initially a proposal by Solid Waste of Willets to operate some of the transfer stations, not all. The board gave direction to come back with a proposal, what would it look like to operate all of the transfer stations? And this has been under consideration and under analysis for the last three-plus years. In June of '09, this board unanimously gave direction, even though Solid Waste of Willets had a proposal on the table, and their competitors could see exactly what their proposal was, this board was not satisfied with the proposal in front of them, wasn't certain they were getting the best deal possible for the county and the ratepayers, and gave direction to the executive office to approach all other waste haulers in the county and invite them to make proposals. And that invitation was made, and none of the other waste haulers in the county were interested in submitting a proposal. Why is that? It might be that the transfer stations, which are small operations, are, for the most part, not cost-effective to operate. They tend to be in somewhat remote locations, relatively small volumes. And in fact, the original agreement that finally came before the board June 22nd capped profit at $50,000. In recognition of the fact that Casper provided a little over half of the volume and is no longer part of the agreement, that profit is now capped at $25,000. So once we determined that no other waste hauler was interested in making a proposal on these projects, the direction was given unanimously by this board to negotiate an agreement with Solid Waste of Willets to lease and operate the six county-operated transfer stations. The negotiations went on for quite some time. The agenda item kept coming back before the board. There were a couple of discussions that were, I would say, messy and inconclusive because we hadn't yet finalized an agreement between the parties. Finally, on May 18th, the board on a split vote gave direction to appoint an ad hoc committee of two members of the board, myself and Supervisor Pinches, to meet with Solid Waste of Willets and county staff to try and close the gap, resolve the outstanding contract issues, and bring something back to the board for an up or down vote. I'll say here, before I go further, that many of the elements of these agreements had already been agreed upon prior to the item going to the ad hoc committee. So the term of the contracts for 14 years, the extension of the three curbside collection contracts to match the term of the transfer station agreement, the cap on profits, the option to expand or to improve the South Coast Transfer Station, and originally that would be if the county chose to direct it, those improvements would be made at a cost of up to $400,000 by Solid Waste of Willets. The fact that the county would receive an option to extend its contract to use the Willets Transfer Station from 2015 until 2030. The fact that Solid Waste of Willets would accept all liability for operation of the transfer stations and would guarantee that the county would have no general fund expense. The guarantee that Solid Waste of Willets would maintain the current days and hours of service to the public. That Solid Waste would offer employment to all the existing county employees at their current hours and rate of pay and enroll them in Solid Waste of Willets benefit plans. These were already all part of the agreement prior to the ad hoc committee getting involved. So it's curious that some people have said this is all sprung full-blown from the minds of the ad hoc committee. In fact, all of these other elements had previously been negotiated pursuant to the direction of the board. When the ad hoc committee met, Director Sweeney, in preparation for that, prepared a number of memos for the ad hoc committee to consider. And the ad hoc committee consisted of the two supervisors, Director Sweeney, County Council Nadell, Director DeShiel, and CEO Angelo. Mr. Sweeney prepared a memo identifying 15 outstanding contract issues that had not been resolved. The ad hoc committee accepted Mr. Sweeney's recommendation on 14.5 of those 15 items and successfully negotiated 13.5 of them into the agreement. Mr. Sweeney also identified in excess of $60,000 in overcharges and a list of non-compliance issues with the existing curbside collection franchise contracts. I think the largest item in there came from a mistaken belief in what the tipping fee was at the Annapolis Transfer Station in Sonoma County, where the South Coast refuse from the curbside collection is disposed of. So making that correction and other corrections in the contracts yielded a total of a little over $60,000 that needed to be refunded to the ratepayers. The ad hoc committee, with the assistance of Director Sweeney and County Council Nadell, succeeded in gaining compliance in 100% of the issues and concurrence that those refunds were all due. So the ad hoc committee didn't give up anything in terms of making sure that the ratepayers were fully reimbursed for any overcharges, and all of those overcharges are to be refunded no later than December 31st of this year. Another thing that should be mentioned, part of the overcharges arose because after the approval of the curbside franchise collection contracts, Mr. Ward discovered that some of the rates were not practical. In some of the areas, people simply would not pay the rate. So he unilaterally lowered some of the rates, in some cases significantly. He increased other rates, and he achieved a certain degree of balance that was apparently recognized by the customers because then people were willing to call in for service. And during the entire time, although people were being charged more than the contract rate, no one ever complained about it. They only came to light, in fact, the cost overcharges associated with Annapolis, I believe Mr. Ward self-reported that issue, if I recall, that he learned that he was not paying the tipping rate he thought at Annapolis. So he self-reported on the biggest overcharge, and the others, you know, we did resolve. But at the same time, he was undercharging people an equivalent amount, 60,000 or more, perhaps. I'm getting a signal it may have been more, but at least 60,000, I think. The committee disallowed any credit for the undercharges because that was a voluntary decision that the company made. Likewise, the committee disallowed any credit for a number of pass-throughs that, had they been requested in a timely manner, the company would have been entitled to. Because they did not timely request them, they were denied. And one other item that the ad hoc committee negotiated was that the City of Willets would also have an option to extend their ability to use the Willets Transfer Station from 2015 until 2030. They have no obligation to do so. When 2015 rolls around, the City of Willets will be able to make an independent judgment. Is it in their interest to renew that option, to exercise that option? Or would they be better served negotiating a better agreement with Solid Waste of Willets or negotiating a better agreement with somebody else? So these revised agreements that were finally put into a final form for the first time came back before the Board of Supervisors on June 22nd, and they were approved. I should also say that as part of the ad hoc committee process, the board was informed that Fort Bragg had been consulted by virtue of their joint ownership of the Casper Transfer Station. And the county has a joint partnership agreement with them. Any changes to that agreement would require the concurrence of Fort Bragg. So there was a meeting of the Casper Transfer Station Joint Coordinating Committee, as called for in the Joint Powers Agreement. I believe two members of our board were in attendance at that committee, two members of the Fort Bragg City Council, city and county staff. I'm not sure what my colleagues will say about that meeting, but I've talked with the city manager of Fort Bragg, the mayor of Fort Bragg, and Director Sweeney, and they all had the understanding, coming out of that meeting, that Fort Bragg had identified the concerns that were important to them, that needed to be included in a revised joint partnership agreement in order to allow the private operator to replace the county. And those elements that they identified were negotiated into the agreement. One had already been negotiated by Director Sweeney, and the other two subsequently were. However, when the item got to the City of Fort Bragg full counsel, they did reject the agreements. They had every right to do so. For whatever reason, they decided they did not, at that time, support the agreements. They have also, to this day, not identified what changes in conditions, if any, would make those agreements acceptable to them. And yet, it is my understanding that if they do identify what changes would be acceptable to them, Solid Waste of Willets is still willing to extend to them the opportunity to have him manage the Casper facility. But that'll be a decision and a discussion that the City of Fort Bragg has to have. But the point to make is that the door is open to them, they're not being excluded from anything, if they wish to participate. It may simply be a case where the interests of the county and the interests of the city may no longer coincide. Following the rejection of the agreements by the City of Fort Bragg, the issue came back to this council or to this board on July 13th for direction as to what the board wished to do. And the direction was that the ad hoc committee should meet with Solid Waste of Willets and county staff to see if it was possible to negotiate a revised agreement for five county transfer stations excluding Casper. Meeting took place with all of the same parties, and based on that meeting, the ad hoc committee believed that it would be possible to negotiate an agreement. Therefore, there was another agenda item on July 27th, and that item basically asked the board for continued authority to meet with Solid Waste of Willets, to have further discussions and negotiations, again, with the intention of arriving at at least an operation agreement for five transfer stations excluding Casper. Some people have said, well, there's no documentation with this agenda item today. How do we even know what is being voted upon? Well, there's probably about this much information up on the website from previous discussions that the board has had. All of the contracts are up on the website and have been for at least a week, I believe. There's no shortage of information. On July 27th, there was a lengthy discussion of the issues, and there was a great deal of background information. On July 27th, the board did give direction... To go forward and negotiate as requested, and we are here today as a result of those negotiations. The ad hoc committee did succeed in reaching an agreement with Solid Waste of Willets with the help of county staff that will provide for an agreement to lease and operate five county-operated transfer stations. There were a number of changes that needed to be made to the agreements to achieve that. Some of the other elements of the previous agreement that had been identified prior to the ad hoc committee getting involved was an increase in the gate fee from $25 a cubic yard to $28 a cubic yard, and an increase in the per-can charge from $4 to $5. So that had already been agreed upon. There was, one of the dollars from the increased gate fee was supposed to go into a capital improvement fund. And so moving forward to what the changes have been by the committee, and I should say that we identified that the shortfall from not having Casper as part of the agreement was approximately $80,000. $40,000 of that was additional revenue that was identified, actually by Mr. Ward, in reviewing the scrap metal handling at Casper. He observed that the county could actually save $40,000 by... He observed that the county could actually save $40,000 by saving, by changing the way that they dealt with the scrap metal. Mr. Sweeney, or Director Sweeney, successfully negotiated that change with Empire Waste, who has the hauling contract for Casper. They were gracious enough to make that change, and so that's, was a key, in Jerry Ward's mind, with making the agreements work. So, that's $40,000 in additional revenue that had been originally identified as part of this process, that with Casper out of the agreement, would no longer be available to the contractor. There was an additional $40,000 that would have been realized from the gate fee increase, no longer available. So, that's $80,000 that needed to be made up from somewhere. The Committee came up roughly with three areas to raise that additional funds. $20,000 is to be raised by going forward now with the improvements at South Coast, rather than waiting and have that be at the option of the county. And that is expected to result in a $20,000 savings in revenue that Solid Waste of Willets will be able to benefit from. And I'll come back to the South Coast issue, because I think it's a, probably an underlooked part of this agreement, but a very important one. The Committee also agreed to recommend an increase in the curbside collection fees of 1.85%, and that will result in additional revenue of $40,000. Finally, the Committee agreed somewhat reluctantly to raise the gate fee an additional dollar to $29, and that is projected to raise approximately $20,000. The per-can charge would stay the same as it had previously been recommended, $5. So, overall, there will be an increase to the per-can charge of 25%, which had already been factored into the agreement, an increase to the gate fee of 16%, up from 12, an increase to the curbside collection rate of 1.85%, which had not originally been part of the agreement. With regard to the South Coast improvements, the situation there is that currently Solid Waste of Willets disposes of its solid waste at the Annapolis Transfer Station in Sonoma County. The small collection trucks cannot make the long haul to the Portero Hills landfill in Solano County, where Solid Waste of Willets has a favorable tipping fee. They also are not able to discharge their loads at the South Coast Transfer Station because that transfer station is not set up to accommodate that. So, the change that would be made is Solid Waste of Willets will be required to invest $400,000 of their own funds to improve the South Coast Transfer Station so that the local curbside collection trucks can discharge their waste there, it can be loaded into transfer trailers, and then economically trucked to the Portero Hills landfill in Solano County. Why are we doing this? The current gate fee at Annapolis is $84.50 per ton, and it's my understanding shortly to go down to $81.50. It could just as easily increase as it surely will in the future, based on trucking costs and so forth. There is also the possibility Sonoma County could decide at some point to close the Annapolis landfill. So, by making the necessary improvements at the South Coast Transfer Station with an assumed tipping fee of $75 per ton, based on trucking costs and based on the tipping fee at Portero Hills, Solid Waste of Willets will not only be able to amortize the cost of making those improvements over the term of the agreement, they will also be able to guarantee rate stability for the South Coast region, so that the South Coast will not be held hostage to whatever the tipping fee might be at Annapolis, but based on the improvements at South Coast and Solid Waste's guaranteed low tipping fee through 2030, they will be able to control their own destiny. That's a great benefit to these agreements, I believe.
Supervisor-
Yes.
We need to start wrapping up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the many critics of these agreements have not identified how those improvements to South Coast will be made if we do not sign on to these agreements. And another, I'll close by saying that the only certain result of these agreements will be that we will have reduced hours of operation at the existing transfer stations, we will have no guarantee of no net county cost from the general subsidy, we will not have the South Coast improvements, and we will have less employment for the people who should be operating those stations. So, I'll conclude with that. The only point I would make, numerous people say there is no analysis of the cost-benefit of these agreements, and I believe that Director DeShiel or CEO Angelo will have a response to that.
Director DeShiel or Ms. Angelo?
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the Board, good afternoon. Howard DeShiel, Director of Transportation. I want to add, too, that the Solid Waste Director under contract, Mike Sweeney, is with us here today as well. Analysis that was done, I don't want to spend a lot of time, I think Supervisor McCowen summed it up pretty well. You know, one element that might have happened a little before his summary kicked in, or the Ad Hoc work, was the CEO Mitchell did in the winter of 2009, in his office, perform a cost-benefit analysis of the then-proposal for just South Coast that showed a savings of $65,000. Since then, I think that the actions that Supervisor McCowen described that went on through August of 2009, when the Board did authorize that we enter into direct negotiations, you know, took on further analysis beyond that. But, there has been analysis going back in 2009, 2008, 2007, at least proposals that were looked at, a good amount of work that was provided, and I guess I'll just kind of point to the stack here and be willing to answer specific questions as they come up.
Okay. Did you have anything? Mr. Sweeney?
Mike Sweeney, General Manager, Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority. To try to pick up the thread, I think what Supervisor McCowen is looking for here is a recognition that the small transfer stations have probably, for their entire history, been operated at a deficit. There has been a policy of the County of Mendocino to subsidize these operations in recognition of the fact that it's difficult to make them break even at a reasonable tipping fee. And for many years, there was an allocation in the general fund to Budget Unit 4510 that was quite significant in some years. And our current physical situation, there's general unanimous recognition that the county can no longer allocate general fund dollars to subsidize these sites. So, the choice essentially is to pursue the privatization option, as Supervisor McCowen has laid it out, or to revise the circumstances under which the county would continue to operate them, and it's generally agreed that that's going to involve some measure of gate fee increase and some, possibly some reduction in hours of operation.
Thank you. Supervisor Pinches, and I'd like to go to Supervisors Cole Faks and Smith.
Sure. I just like, I think Supervisor McCowen, who is the Chairman of the Ad Hoc Committee, just made a real detailed presentation of what the process, how the process worked and what we've come up with. I will say there's one short thing that's, he failed to mention, and it's a big issue to me, I brought it up several times. In the South Coast, about five years ago, four or five years ago, we had almost a million-dollar injury there that the county had absorbed, and actually, all county departments really pay for that million-dollar injury, because we're self-insured. Through this agreement, Solid Waste of Willets assumes all liability of these transportations. And I think that's a real, a really heavy dollar figure, because to say that there'll be no other injuries or any liability cases in our transportations ever again, if the county kept them, would be, it certainly wouldn't be a good assumption financially. So, but it's a real, because the insurance and how policies work in the private sector, virtually, and county insured, it's a real plus for transferring the operation of these Solid Waste facilities, or these transfer stations, to the private sector. And that's just something that the way the government's set up doesn't have the competitive advantage to compete with. But, it makes me feel a lot better, knowing that, and transfer stations are a considerable risk area with people coming in and little kids running around and pickups backing up and things like that. So, the county to get out from underneath that liability risk for the length of the contract is certainly, I feel, is going to be a real savings to Mendocino County. That's aside from the general fund contribution that we've had over the last probably dozen years, probably the $2 to $10 million, $10 to $12 million that we've contributed to keep those transfer stations operational. As Mr. Sweeney said, historically, they've run at a loss. So, when we first went out to do this process, you know, it was only Solid Waste of Willets that said, "Hey, we'll step up and look into an agreement." We put the word out to everybody, everybody in the garbage business, hauling business, nobody but Solid Waste of Willets really come forward on this. So, I'm just thankful we have a local company that's really stepped forward and continued the local business. The privatization of Solid Waste issues at all levels, from hauling to picking up the trash at your, at your house, has been done by the private sector forever. And so, this is just a final piece that the private sector will take over and it creates savings to County Mendocino, and actually, better service and better rates to the people in Mendocino County.
Supervisor Cole Faks.
Well, I'm reluctant to attempt to refute the comments made by my colleague, given the way in which the phrasing, the intonation, the restatement of reality advances his particular case, and it is a case that is being made and not the result of an analysis. I assume I'll have three minutes? Is that what we're following now for the rebuttal part of this? I got the impression that as Chair of an Ad Hoc Committee now, one is permitted to go on and on at great length, and, but you did note that the rest of us will be following the rules, which is one, one series of comment-
When we get into the debate of, further debate, if you have a story, and you have a timeline, and you have an opinion, I'd very much like you to give it.
Well, my main, my main concern here is, is that an Ad Hoc Committee that was created just as recently as, what, four weeks ago?
May 18th.
The Ad Hoc Committee that was created was given a mandate, and yet, it was a mandate to bring back to the Board of Supervisors a perspective that the Board of Supervisors would agree to or review. In this, in that particular instance, what we got instead was a, and I had some notes here on this, that instead what we got back was an advocacy position on behalf of the Committee. In other words, the Ad Hoc Committee agreed to a particular perspective, but advocated a position, rather than present the data, the information, that other Board members, particularly two of us from the coast, whose districts were most directly impacted on this, and then subsequently, very seriously impacted. We did not get, that's point one, the Ad Hoc Committee abused its discretion, the Ad Hoc Committee did not perform in a manner that an Ad Hoc Committee is ordinarily expected to, which is to bring back either a split decision or a joint decision, a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. What we got here, in fact, was, we have met, we have information, we negotiated this, we did this, and we did that. The second point, I don't know what it means to have a, an agreement that is not an agreement, and that is exactly what has been said over and over again. It was agreed, the Ad Hoc Committee agreed to this, the Ad Hoc Committee agreed to that. This agreement was changed, but we then corrected it to this point and that point. Each of these points took us little by little down the road of ignoring the real question, even to the point that our Director of Transportation, who received a list of questions from our consultant, our paid consultant, was reluctant, for whatever reasons, to respond to those questions, one of which is, if the county were to do, and I'll put it very simply, if the county were to do what Solid Waste of Willets is going to do according to the agreed, but not yet quite agreed upon setup, wouldn't the county be in a position to change its operations and accomplish the very same objectives of maintaining county involvement? You have not answered that question. Mr. Sweeney put it forward. Now, we're here, since just last week, I believe last week, that we've got now kind of a, a surcharge on a surcharge. We've raised the rates, we're going to raise the rates, so would the county have raised the rates. But, because of a complication that we can't get the kind of profit out of it, or the funding out of it, forget about profit here, before, because we cannot get the funding that we need out of this, there's going to be an extra dollar amount. Well, it's only a dollar this month, maybe three months from now, or when somebody cracks his or her head, we're going to hear, "Well, gosh, we never expected to happen so soon, so hard, and so ugly." Supervisor Pinches, I think you make about as strong a case as anybody could. I don't know that Solid Waste of Willets has the resources to handle the kind of lawsuits that may result from this serious injury that the county would be routinely and ordinarily expected to make. I'm not going to argue, I'm not going to get into a point-by-point refutation, but I would like, in this particular discussion, to hear the person who has been responsible for the problems or successes of the management of Waste in Mendocino County for, how long, Howard? Three, four years now? Three or four years, would you say, roughly? And it seems that, that once the Supervisors made it pretty clear that there was some movement, or perhaps when your boss, your former boss, who is no longer with us, did some numbers on the back of an envelope, as I saw him do with me in Booneville one afternoon, two weeks before he departed, when he came up with these numbers, did you assume that this is where it's going? It's going to privatization, so get behind the boss, because after all, he hires and fires? And we brought in Mike Sweeney, who's raised key questions that are, have been systematically and deliberately, openly ignored by you, and I must say, the, our CEO, precisely because at the moment, it looks like three Supervisors are committed to the privatization, come hell or high water. The economics of this particular configuration have not been adequately analyzed, and one can put together any kind of mixture, as the meltdown of the last two years at the larger national level has clearly shown. One can play games with numbers in order to achieve certain ideological or policy objectives. But, in this case, Mr. Sweeney comes up to the issue very slowly and says something, but quite frankly, I think he's been much too shy, too terse, too cryptic in his comments. If you listen to what he said, he's saying, "It can be done if this happens," and this happens, "by the county, and there is no reason then to privatize." I'm interpreting what Mr. Sweeney is trying to say- I'm interpreting what Mr. Sweeney is trying to say without saying it out loud. Now, the question I need to hear from you is, can it be done? What changes specifically could be done to keep this particular operation in place? If you will answer that, I think you'll see that the privatization presentation is ideologically driven, is part of an overall anti-government perspective that is dominating our economic climate nationally and now here locally. This is a tiny piece of an overall ideological movement in this country, which has infected, I think, our policies here at the county level. Sorry, it's a long introduction to a question. Your mouth's been open for about forty seconds, I apologize.
No problem. Supervisor Colfax, again, Howard Dashil, Director of County Transportation. Let me try to hit on, I think there were several questions in that. Let me first say that no CEO, past or present, has ever told me not to respond to any particular action. I take, and so do the CEOs, our policy direction from the board. I would go back to the May 18th Board of Supervisors meeting where I did submit a two or three-page, you know, counterproposal for continued county operation as opposed to the privatization proposals that were going forward then. It was done rather quickly, it was a cursory review. I had identified a more modest seventeen percent reduction in service and a thirty-two-dollar a cubic yard fee as a possibility. Subsequent to that, Mr. Sweeney did point out some, some things that were probably incorrect in that review, and I would say, looking back, that it probably didn't need to be thirty-two, it might have well just been thirty-one dollars. Nevertheless, I did put forth to the board at that point that it would be possible, if the board directed, to do a more extensive work and to come up with a enterprise fund, as Mr. Sweeney called it that day on the eighteenth. Direction of the board was very clear, we're going to spend our time continuing because we think we have better public service, it's better public policy, to go forward with the negotiations with the private sector. In that case, I have a lot of work to do at DOT, and I didn't spend more time on that, until, until that proposal appeared to not go forward with the actions of the city of Fort Bragg. That point on July 17th, I brought back a proposal to you that would meet the net county cost that was assigned to me in the, the CEO's budget, which this board did, as a tentative budget, they haven't adopted it yet, said that that would be our operating preliminary budget. That required a fifty percent reduction in service. I didn't propose a fee increase because at this point, a fee increase is conjecture, and that would have to be approved, but that is the, the option, or options that I put forth. So it's purely, and it's always been, not the CEO's policy decision, not my policy decision, but this board's policy decision on whether you want to privatize or whether you want to send me back to operate the county transfer stations in the best way I possibly can. And depending on what this board directs me to do, as they could have on the eighteenth of, of May, as they could have on the seventeenth of July, I will do that. So no one is, if I can, Supervisor, take from your statements, you know, causing me to create a situation that forces this one way or the other. After all, I'm a, a government employee, I, I have nothing against government function and government doing things, but, you know, as best I can, in looking at a comparison to the synergies that the private industry can produce here, the fact that they have, you know, most of the operation already that is private, they haul away the material, they dispose of it, they have the infrastructure for it, I have not been able to put together a county budget that apples-to-apples competes with that. Even Mr. Sweeney, if you're referring to his, I believe it was, his memo to me of July 17th, didn't exactly apples-to-apples compare to the proposal that Solid Waste of Willets has put forward. In fact, theirs performs more service at less cost to the county. So to answer your question, I think, this board wants to direct me to go back and do the best possible job operating those county stations, I will. At this point, it's the board's decision on what you want me to do. No one's forcing me to throw this one direction or the other.
Now, Howard, just let me, let me just make one statement. That's precisely why I objected to the creation, a very odd kind of thing, the creation of an ad hoc committee to address those issues. You already said, you came forward with a fifty, you're talking about reduction in staff, but you chose at that time not to talk about the apples, you were still talking about oranges.
Supervisor.
Why not? Why not? Let me just make my point here, because it's so simple that it, that it just has to be addressed. If you will increase, if you had come in and said, yeah, we'll do exactly what, and we'll add the dollar too, what Solid Waste of Willets, that's apples-to-apples.
But I can't do it. I cannot give you apples-to-apples for the same amount of money.
You said it was conjecture.
I can't do it.
You said it was conjecture, and therefore you couldn't do it.
Well, no, I, I have, I could look at some other options that would continue the operation, but they are going to be more costly. I still am in need of net county costs, general fund subsidy for the same amount of service. I can't, you know, I mean, I, I'd love to win the bid, but I can't.
Okay, I'm gonna stop there. Thank you Supervisor Colfax. Supervisor Smith.
Well, Madam Chair, just, just for the record, I, I kept track of the time that Supervisor McCowen used to take us through this, this intro to this issue. He had twenty-one minutes from two twenty-two to two forty-three. I just want to make sure that we each on the board get equal time to discuss the issue.
I, how long did Supervisor Colfax take here recently?
I didn't keep, I didn't keep track.
Okay, well.
Twenty-one would be the highest at this point.
I don't think individuals should have that, it should be a shared thing. I know that Supervisor Pinches also took time as well. Please go forward, but I think twenty-one minutes per person is a very long time, and we do have public comment, so please go forward.
Well, Madam Chair, I don't, I mean, twenty-one minutes each, I don't, I, I think that that's reasonable. I mean, we've got all the time we need, and we certainly aren't going to limit the public's input. I just have a series of questions that I would like to ask of staff, and they're, they're rather lengthy and detailed. I have a number of other pieces I'd like to read into the record, so I just want to make sure that we each get our fair share of time, and I just don't want to be cut off.
Well, I think you're wasting time. You can have twenty-one minutes, Ms. Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would prefer to hear from the public and then, I, I have questions of staff.
No, please go ahead right now, because I'm sure the public wants to hear. Please go forward, you have twenty-one minutes.
Madam Chair, I'm not ready to speak yet, I'd like to hear.
Then you won't get twenty-one minutes after. Take your time now, that way the public can hear what's being said.
Can you explain to me why I wouldn't get twenty-one minutes when we have all the time we need?
Because we're talking about an introduction. Supervisor McCowen is Chair of the ad hoc, gave the introduction, you have your opportunity, Supervisor Colfax has had his opportunity, Supervisor Pinches has had his, please go forward, then we'll hear the public.
So this will be part of my twenty-one minutes, correct?
This is your twenty-one minutes. Go forward.
Well, Madam Chair, wait a minute, wait a minute. I think we need to go to the procedure. I certainly would like to be able to comment publicly after we hear from the board, so...
And we will go to Rule nineteen at that point for all five supervisors, so please go forward.
So you'd like me to have the twenty-one minutes now, then we'll still have the Rule nineteen after?
We will have the Rule nineteen after.
Okay, then maybe the clerk could start, keep a track of the time, so we're all...
I'm keeping track of your time, we've been on this for four minutes now, so.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney, I have some questions of you, please. With respect to this, the larger issue, well, first is an opening comment, I have real concerns about this coming forward as an ad hoc process. The introduction Supervisor McCowen gave was extremely lengthy, and it, it does not substitute for staff overview of this process. What's one of my major concerns, and I'd like to certainly conclude with that, but it is, it isn't usually done this way. You don't have supervisors negotiating, being the primary negotiators at a negotiating table with an outside contractor of really any magnitude. I mean, that's why labor relations, we're all familiar with that, supervisors do not sit at the table. So there's something that has gone terribly, terribly wrong, that this has been allowed to go down the path. I believe that what we need to do today, we have, all we have before us is an agenda summary, is a one-page agenda summary with a two-page attachment, as well as the five contracts we're supposed to be looking at. The appropriate process, this, this dates back four years, would be that we would review the ad hoc committee's work, we would accept the ad hoc committee report, and then we would direct staff to bring us the appropriate information to, to conclude the process. So you don't usually go from an ad hoc committee and then you go forward voting on five contracts that take us to curbside collection contracts till 2024. It just isn't done that way. It is, it is, you know, we've substituted board involvement where we are supposed to have staff, and if not internal staff, professional outside hired negotiators. That has not occurred, and I think that the public should be very, very concerned about that. It really does, it's not the process we use, and I don't know how, it, it's gone terribly, terribly wrong that it's gone down this path. So let's get to some of the, the contract components. So Mr. Sweeney, what are the current termination dates of SWOAS contracts? We're talking about three here today. What are the, what are the dates on those?
The Solid Waste of Willets has three exclusive franchise contracts with the county. South Coast Area Franchise Four, I believe it terminates approximately 2013. Franchise Area One, North County, terminates in its present form approximately the end of 2015.
Okay.
And I believe this, approximately the same date, possibly 2016 is true for Franchise Area Three, Anderson Valley.
Okay.
Did I get those right, Jerry?
Roughly speaking, I think we have, we have those dates. So could we put out to bid or renegotiate each of these contracts on those, on those dates of termination? Would we be able to do that?
You mean in their present form?
Correct.
Well, yes, upon the termination date, the county would have the option of rebidding them or renegotiating and extending them.
All three of those prior to the, to the date of conclusion?
Correct.
Either putting them out or renegotiating with the hauler?
That's correct.
Okay. So does this deal change that, what we're looking at here today?
Well, yes, one of the fundamental parts of this package is that Solid Waste of Willets gains an extension in each of those three contracts, so they all run until December 31st, 2024, which is about a little over fourteen years from now.
And those are exclusive contracts, is that correct?
All of the county's franchise collection contracts are exclusive.
So does this package of contracts before us here today, does it give the public, those that are subscribing to those services in those three contract areas, does it give the public any rate reduction in return for extending to the exclusive contractor till 2024, the, the, those exclusive rights? Does the public getting any rate reduction?
So you're referring to the package of new contracts that you're looking at today?
Correct.
No, there are no franchise contract rate reductions.
Are there any increases?
Well, yes, as Supervisor McCowen pointed out, in the revamping of this deal to exclude Casper, one change was to introduce a 1.85 percent across-the-board rate increase for the three franchise areas. And I'm glad you mentioned that because I do have a correction. The increase effective September 1 in South Coast would be only 1.2 percent because we have been notified by Sonoma County that the tipping fee at Annapolis Transfer Station will decline by three dollars and three cents effective September 1. And that pass-through will translate into a six, 0.6 percent decrease in what the company would otherwise be charging for South Coast, so the net increase under this proposal for South Coast will be only 1.2 percent in the collection rates.
And so what is the justification for these rate increases? Because usually in contract extensions, you either see a contract extension fee, this board's discussed this here before, information has been provided that that is common, why the, why the increase?
Well, I think Supervisor McCowen touched upon that in his introduction. As part of the negotiation, there was an objective to provide additional revenue to Solid Waste of Willets, which Solid Waste of Willets stated would offset the, the loss they expected to operating these five sites. So the process was to look for ways to give Solid Waste of Willets that extra revenue, and this was one of them.
Well, so, so the public needs to understand that with this arrangement of merging in the contractual discussions, the solid waste transfer operations with the curbside collections in these three areas, that those individual customers are in a sense having to offset it for the county's decision to go forward with this, with this sort of combination package. So the rate payers are going to pay an increased price at the curbside, and the reason given is that the profits would have been less than desirable with the elimination of Casper, hence the county is basically acquiescing to the hauler's demand for a higher fee.
Was that a question?
Yes. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think you used the word profit incorrectly, is that the, it's a, this amount will go to the revenue of Solid Waste of Willets. What profit they make, if any, from the transfer station operation is a different question.
But, but the public is going, those that, at curbside collection, which is in, could, it could be argued that there's no nexus between the curbside collection for the consumer and the operation of the transfer stations, they're two separate entities. So I think it's just important that the record needs to really show that in this very last review or, or change in the contract proposal, there were no rate increases prior to Casper, the Casper falling away from the package, if you will. And now we're seeing this increase, that's new. The 1.85 in general rate increase is in the last proposal only, is that correct?
That's true.
Okay. So what are the gate fees at the transfer stations today?
It would be four dollars for a thirty-gallon can and twenty-five dollars per cubic yard.
And so under this contract that goes to, I believe Supervisor McCowen stated, it goes from, to twenty-nine?
From four dollars to five dollars per thirty, thirty-gallon can and from twenty-five to twenty-nine dollars per cubic yard.
Per cubic yard.
And this is, we're, we're speaking of only these five transfer stations?
Correct.
Because Casper is no longer part of this mix.
Correct. So what will happen to the Casper rates?
Well, at the present time, there's no proposal to change the Casper rate, and any approval, any change in the Casper rate would have to be agreed to by the city of Fort Bragg.
So can the county operate the transfer stations without a subsidy at a gate fee less than what is being proposed under this, these arrangements for Solid Waste of Willets?
Well, I believe that Mr. Dashil spoke to that just a few moments ago, and I don't want to second guess his analysis.
But I believe that you sent us a memo outlining specifics with respect to a twenty-eight-dollar fee, staffing levels and hours where, and, and the new development with respect to the, the metals that you had, you negotiated, and other recyclables that fit into the equation, and you found, in your opinion, that, that the county could operate the transfer station?
There's two sides to the transfer station operation. One is the revenues you get, which are based on the gate fee and the volume of waste, and the other is the expenses you incur, which partly are controlled by how many hours you stay open. What has been discussed back and forth, I think in good faith, I've contributed, Howard Dashil has given it several approaches in the time he has available, is trying to project, if the county continued operation, how many hours the sites could stay open and what gate fee you could charge. And I believe, it's, it's my opinion, the last time I looked at it in July, that there could be a series of reductions in hours, fairly moderate reduction in hours, combined with some level of gate fee increase that would result in a balanced budget for these sites under the present circumstances.
Thank you. A few questions on the, on the South Coast for a moment. Where does the South Coast franchise area trash go today?
It goes to the Annapolis Transfer Station in Sonoma County by arrangement with Sonoma County, and it's done so for some years.
And is there any indication from Sonoma County that you have had that our access to Annapolis, Annapolis will end?
No, Sonoma County is of the opinion that they welcome Mendocino County... No, Sonoma County is of the opinion that they welcome Mendocino County trash, and they have no plan to close Annapolis.
So what is the gate fee at Annapolis?
Well, as I said earlier, it was just reduced from, by $3.03, which is a reduction from 84.57 to 81.51.
So you're talking about a downward trend with respect to those rates, and I believe that's the contract that expires in 2013, I said? You, you said that the county would be, in other words, otherwise, in a position with trends going downward, to be in a negotiating position if this did not go forward today, to possibly save consumers of the South Coast, in this case, money?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
You've just heard from Sonoma County, rates at Annapolis are trending down. You quoted that, that's a fact.
They did institute a reduction, yes.
Correct.
Effective September 1.
And I believe you said that that's, that's the contract that will expire in 2013.
No, the contract that expires in 2013 is the county's exclusive franchise contract with Solid Waste of Willets to do collection in the South Coast area.
But, but there's no concern that our access to the Annapolis site will be, will end? You said no?
No, I don't have that concern.
Okay. So, so who built the present South Coast transfer station facility, the county facility?
The County of Mendocino Solid Waste Division under Department of Transportation. It's a self-fall facility, it's been improved, roof, tipping floor, the whole thing.
So, so there's no conclusive information right now that the transfer station amenities absolutely need to be made at South Coast?
Well...
It's been a, a point of discussion?
It is, and, and I, there's no question that in the best of all possible worlds, it'd be better for Mendocino County to have the ability for the franchise area four trucks to dump at our own transfer station at, at South Coast rather than having to go drive an extra distance to Annapolis. The problem is, is that when the improvements were made to South Coast, it was only done insofar as envisioning it as a self-fall drop-off facility and not to have the additional tip floor, et cetera, to accommodate the commercial trucks. So the, the choice that's been before the county here for some time is whether to invest to make those improvements at South Coast so that the franchise area four trucks can dump there, or else to continue to have the franchise four trucks go to Annapolis. And that's the choice, there isn't a immediate urgency, but I would think that no one can deny that in the best of all possible worlds, it would be nice to have that ability at our own facility.
So Mr. Sweeney, you sent the board a memo a number of weeks ago with your concerns about the internal process, and, and you, you proposed some things in that, in that memo, you sent it to board members. Did, did you ever get a response to that memo?
I'm sorry, which memo?
The memo that you sent, that you said you were very concerned about some of the specifics about the process, how it was going, you outlined for board members. Your, your sort of, using your expertise, your professional knowledge about operations, and documenting basically for the board, another scenario with respect to management and it being possible, I believe you, that was the memo where you talked about the $28 fee at the gate. Did you ever get a response to that memo? Because I never heard that you did.
It was acknowledged.
It was acknowledged, but you didn't get a response?
It's difficult for me to answer that because I don't want to imply that both the CEO's office and DOT have not been engaged with the issue as to, well, if, if we continue county operation, what would the gate fee be? For instance, I believe that a, a fee adjustment hearing is already scheduled for August 30th that will go forward in the event that the vote here today is no. So I, you know, that's kind of the way I like to respond to that, is, is that the, the issue has been engaged at with, by the people who should be engaged with it.
Good, thank you very much. Mr. Dashiel?
Madam Chair, if I could just make three brief points?
Sure.
To, to some of that. First off, the comment about negotiating a contract extension. Let me just say that, as an example, completely different company, the last time we renewed the contract in the second district, or the second area with Empire Waste Management, the county negotiated that contract extension without going to bid. It was then Solid Waste Director Kaler. We did have, and this is done pretty frequently, if we have an operator that is doing a good job with curbside, and there's not problems, we will do negotiate and then even bring in independent checks. In that case, it was Hilton Farmcoff and Hopson. I think in Mike Sweeney, we have someone who equal, equally is knowledgeable about the industry and what's fair to the ratepayer and to the public. So let me just say that Solid Waste of Willets is not the only company that has gotten a contract extension, you know, that didn't involve going out to bid. Another point would be that the proposal that's discussed, Mike Sweeney's July 17th proposal, did look at a $28 fee, a more modify, or less reduction in hours, and then, you know, even comments to the point that if the administration from DOT and ENSWA was almost like donated, if we just really went bare bones, we, we might be able to make that work. A lot of what would make this work and a lot of continued operational possibilities is if the economy would start to recover and if we could regain some of the volume that we've lost, the 25% reduction, also if the recycle market would become better. So, you know, a lot of this, these other proposals for continued county operation is the hopes that we'll just have a better overall economic condition, and that is unknown and very uncertain. And finally, you know, let me just say, as far as the idea of a publicly-owned transfer station at South Coast, I find it interesting that this is something that the city of Fort Bragg and that the county has spent a lot of time and effort on in the North Coast area to have a publicly-owned facility that could be bid, that would have Mendocino County, you know, control. So I just, you know, I think that is very important. I think if it's good for the North Coast, it, it would be good for the South Coast. I might add, there is not a lot of competition in the South Coast. When we did bid the hauling contract, the present one Mr. Ward has, he was the only bidder for curbside, so we didn't even have competition then. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
But the county, even with the contract, still maintains control?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to go to public comment. Mr. Richard Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Speaking for myself, Richard Johnson. Board members, Chairwoman Brown, it's unclear why these contracts have to be approved today. Is there any objective deadline looming on the horizon, or is there just a need to get it off the table and begin saving money right away? Jerry Ward's company, Solid Waste of Willets, the future depends on this deal. They're not going to go anywhere if we continue negotiating to see if we can get a better deal. I'm asking Supervisor Brown to join Colfax and Smith in voting no on this today and instruct the staff to bring it back in 60 days so we can have a cooling-off period. There's been a lot of invective, supervisors are arguing with each other in the newspapers, Supervisor McGowan has been sending out email blasts on an hourly basis. We need to step back and get the facts on this, even though it's been discussed for three years, we're talking about 14 years into the future. It would be precipitous to rush to judgment today to approve this. The lengthy term of these contracts dilute accountability. This company has violated the terms of their current franchises numerous times. More than half the hauling customers are being charged the wrong rates, and it's unclear, and it was explained today, that they won't be compensated until the end of the year, when presumably these agreements would have been signed and the deal would have been done. It would be wiser to shorten these contract terms to assure compliance before renewing. Also, it's unclear under these contracts who exactly would represent the county in supervising compliance. Would it be Dashiel? Would it be Sweeney? It's been shown that the transportation department is incapable of assuring Ward's compliance because of the past violations. Perhaps it would be better to let ENSWA supervise or create a new department called Solid Waste. Finally, all the arguments favoring this deal depend on the assumption that Solid Waste should break even when most county departments and services are not required to break even. Why should Solid Waste have to pay for itself? Supervisor Brown, please vote this project down and instruct the transportation department not to lay off these workers, do not reduce hours for a cooling-off period of 60 days. Perhaps a citizen advisory committee should be called in to work with an appropriate committee, perhaps the, the joint Fort Bragg County Committee to rewrite these contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Lee Edmondson?
I have never...
Sir, please state your name.
Lee Edmondson, for the record, thank you.
Thank you.
I brought a proposal before this board a number of years ago, it was vetted in a subcommittee. And the subcommittee brought their recommendations to the board, the board accepted those recommendations and directed it to staff. That's the proper procedure in these matters. You don't negotiate a contract with an ad hoc committee. You can say until you're blue in the face that all the documentation and all the staff reports and all the analysis are there, but this is what is considered to be your final report. I have never seen a final report from any department in this government that did not have attached to it staff reports, because that is what supports or does not support the findings of the committee. This is completely lacking here. Your process and procedure has got the cart before the horse, and what I'm asking you to do simply today is the right thing procedurally, process-wise, in terms of due diligence, in terms of good governance. Accept the committee's report. It is a good one, and they've worked long and hard on it and deserve our congratulations. Having done that, acknowledge their hard work, refer this document to staff, CEO, county council, and especially your auditor and accounting, because in everything I read on the web that was available all week long, there's not dollars figured in. There's no cost-benefit analysis. You don't know, you can't know if this is a good deal for this county or not, because the numbers simply are not there to either support the findings of this committee or to not support the committee's findings. I can't know, as an informed citizen, I can't know without the numbers, without the analysis. Without the numbers and analysis, you cannot know. And if you cannot know, then you're not making an informed decision. You are voting on ideology, political philosophy, maybe, but you are not voting on the good business interests, the best business interests for this people of this county, and that's what you are obliged to do. No doubt about it. This is not an ideological forum. This is where you do good business, the best business for the people of this county. Accept their report, refer it to the relevant departments, ask for staff reports, and bring it back, and then let's have the big debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Bushinsky? Bushinsky? Bujansky? Okay.
For the record, Bob Bushansky.
Thank you.
I had a few points, and I did have a letter that I sent out to all the media outlets in the county. I've had a couple of responses, I'd like to submit it. That's too long to comply with my three minutes, so I'll just go over a few points. Why is the county awarding a contract to a contract violator? That's my first point. They overcharged the Anderson Valley, the South Coast, and North County areas by $60,000, and the point was made that Mr. Ward of South, Solid Waste of Willets, made a unilateral decision to reduce some rates and raise others. But there was a contract in place. Someone with a contract in place has no right at all to make a unilateral decision. And now we're going to be going forward for 14 years, how many more unilateral decisions will be made by Solid Waste of Willets? And what is the county going to be getting? And I've heard some of this discussion mentioned here, and you obviously had previous discussion about inducements that are given. Well, the city of Healdsburg got $150,000 from raising a contract from five years to 10 years. They also got an additional $160,000 benefit by having their sludge hauled from their new solid waste plant. That amounted to another $160,000 in value. And why does the Board of Supervisors find it necessary to sell off or, in my opinion, give away the five transfer stations? Point number four, the city of Fort Bragg offered to raise the rates at the Casper Transfer Station as a show of good faith to start renegotiating with the county. And yet, the county has offered no attempt to renegotiate with the city of Fort Bragg. And my last point is, it was stated that the city of Fort Bragg was kept well-informed. Well, not according to the council members, it wasn't. They only found the final contract terms after the last vote here, four days before their council meeting, to approve or disapprove of the contract as it was put forth. Each of the three members of the council decided for different reasons. And the difficulty they had was, they didn't know before the contracts were handed over what was fully in them. I realize my time is up, so there's no, no point in my getting into something else.
No, you can go ahead, you're still on green.
Well, it's...
Oh, okay.
I saw the seven seconds.
Sorry.
I couldn't make a point in seven seconds.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
I think we could give him a little more time to sum up.
Okay, very quickly, please.
All I'm asking for today is what I've heard from a couple of other people before. Do not vote final, have a final vote today. I believe that there is still more information to be given to the public, and as is pointed out, there was a lot of confusion sown in the public. Well, why? Because maybe there was stuff on the website, but as Mr. Edmondson pointed out, there is no financial stuff on the website, and there is information going back and forth. It is the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to make things clear for the residents of Mendocino County. And yet, if, as Madam Chair pointed out, there's a lot of confusion. Well, before you make a final vote, you should clear up some of that confusion so those of us may say in the end, yes, this is a reasonable contract, or no, maybe it needs reworking. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to respond to you on the $28 offer from the city of Fort Bragg at the Casper?
Yes.
That they would be willing to do that. We still have nothing in writing, sir. And, and, you know, that causes me great heartburn. So it's, you know, perhaps more written correspondence that you're asking for of the county and analysis. I think it was Councilman Jirdy that basically addressed a survey, and I believe the county does look at the operations and does do an analysis of what it is costing, because Councilman Jirdy came forth with a 2008, was it, Mr. Dashiel? Analysis, and then there's been something recently that changed the 2008 analysis because of the downturn in the actual market itself. So thank you very much. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment? I do not have another speaker card, but if you would like to comment, please come Seeing no one come forward?
You got one back there.
Oh. Oh. Ma'am, state your name for the record and know you have three minutes.
Anna Taylor Navarro. I was one of the very first dump attendants in Mendocino County long ago, when the county took over the dumps because a lady fell into the Boonville Dump and burned to death. It sounds as though this process is now being pushed because of another accident at a dump. In between those times, the county and its managers, the dumps used to be, as Mr. Bell Trommy can tell you, used to be under Budge Campbell's Department of Public Works. During the entire time since then, which I think was about 1972, the county really has done nothing, I can tell you with assurance, nothing to make solid waste work better in Anderson Valley. I think Richard Johnson referred to Supervisor McCowen's email blasts, one of which said that the county would save $300,000 to $500,000 if blah, blah, blah. And I just want to point out from a layman's point of view that that's a lot of slop for what you say you're going to save when you don't show how you're going to save it. But that he also talked about the county, presumably these gentlemen who are, you know, paid well, controlling, controlling flow control and some other something that sounded quite important that slips my mind at the moment.
The right to add additional items to the waste diversion, like food waste?
No, it was something over which the county, these guys, would have control that you wouldn't think, I'm sorry, I can't remember it, that you wouldn't think would apply in a situation like that. And you just have to wonder what the hurry is. Is the hurry the upcoming election? Is the hurry to okay this in what really is a very odd way, with Mr. McCowen and Mr. Pinches negotiating to make up the amount of money that Mr. Ward apparently demands to do whatever? That, I don't think it'll come out well in the end, even if you okay it. I think it will. I urge you not to. I urge you to look at how you could improve, how you could improve things so that people in Anderson Valley, for example, don't all have pretty much other alternatives or find them. So, please don't. The last time I was here, it was to urge you to leave well enough alone when you were going ahead on Measure B, that that's how little I like to come here from, Navarro. So.
Thanks. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, public comment, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll come back to the board. Supervisor McCowen.
Madam Chair, I'm going to put a motion on the floor, and I suggest we each limit ourselves to one final statement. I will move the recommended action.
Second.
Madam Chair, I have to, for informational reasons, point out that there was an error in one of the documents that we can quickly correct, just for the record, so that it's all clear what you are being moved to approve. And I'll take responsibility for this. There was evidently a paragraph dropped from the really short document, which was the option agreement that would allow the county the ability to basically renew the Willets Transfer Station contract after it expires in 2015. And there is, if you, I don't know whether you have copies of it available, but for the record, I'd like to read in an additional paragraph that needs to be inserted under subsection four.
What I would like to do, I'd like to stop right now. I would like to have whatever that paragraph is put in contents so that we can view it as a body piece and so the clerk can get it entered into the record.
So you'd like a copy of it made?
We will take about a 10-minute break to get that all done, copies for the board and copies for the public, and then we'll come back and you can restate it. Pauline, I'm going to ask you to revisit the record.
Did you see that letter, John? To the counties?
Yeah. I see we're already getting a fervent.
Who is?
Supervisor McCowen. Okay, supervisors. We do have a motion on the floor made by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Mr. Sweeney has brought forth a correction that needs to be made into the contract. Clerk, can you please read it?
Yes. With amendment to option agreement to enter into a new agreement for transfer station operation and solid waste transportation and disposal between the county of Mendocino and Solid Waste of Willets, Inc. Number C, if a newly established county publicly owned commercial transfer station is owned in the Fort Bragg area after December 31, 2015, county may redirect franchise area number two, coastal zone, solid waste to the new county-owned transfer station. Current paragraph C and D will be relettered to D and E.
Okay. Supervisors, any question?
She should have said opened instead of owned. Just—
Oh, okay. Thank you for that correction. Supervisor McCowen, do you want to recognize that in your motion?
Yes, that change would be incorporated into the motion.
Second agrees.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there discussion to the motion? Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that the board should take the suggestion of a number of members of the public in terms of accepting the report. I think procedurally, that's what we should do. I think that then we would only, then and only then would we fully vet the complexities of the contract. We still do not have the financial analysis, contrary to comments made here. We don't have the financial components in terms of the value of the contract, the value of the contract to the provider and to the citizens. We've heard here today that the rates are going up for curbside collection. This is contrary to what is customary with either contract extension fees or concessions from the hauler for the exclusivity of such a contract. I believe the contract length is far, far too long. No one has come forward from the public saying that this is customary. We don't have that from staff. In fact, it seems to be extraordinary that a contract extension length of this magnitude would be granted, and having it be granted as per the contracts before us without any concession, and in fact, a rate increase, not a rate decrease to the ratepayers, nor any fees provided to the county for that exclusive contract extension, virtually a monopoly in these areas, I think is really problematic, and I believe that the public is correct in stating that we shouldn't go forward today. I think we should accept the report of the ad hoc and take the various five contracts that were negotiated as per the agenda summary negotiated by the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee of Supervisors McCowen and Pinches, and take those work products under review and externally vet those if it is, if the internal staff didn't feel that they could do their due diligence with respect to that review. And I believe at this juncture, we probably would need an external review. So I have one final thing, Madam Chair, that I would like to read into the record. And since we're not just accepting the reports, and I would support that, if there would be an amendment to the motion supporting the acceptance of the ad hoc committee's report as listed in Item 7D and accepting the five contracts for review, I would support that motion. However, that's not the motion before us. So I want to read one final piece into the record, Madam Chair, and that is a memo I sent to our CEO. This has been touched upon by the public here today, talking about not having the dollar amounts in the critique available for public consumption. I don't believe that board members have that either. It's not that just the public hasn't received it. And I believe that the core issue here is a procedural one, and that we have not had appropriate staff review and involvement with this process. So this is a memo that I sent yesterday to the CEO. This memo is to memorialize several requests for executive review, cost benefit analysis, and policy assessment, and overall executive oversight on a Board of Supervisors' policy decisions with years of impact to residents and Mendocino County service delivery. The agenda summary as published reflects the work of the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee. A one-page summary and short attachment provided by the committee serve as the only documents the board and the public have received on a significant fiscal issue facing decision-makers. Having no analysis on the Solid Waste Transfer Station management agreement or financial implications of a 14-year extension to 2024 on exclusive franchise rights for curbside collection in three areas of the county is of great concern. In summary, what is the value of the contractual relationship to the contractor, and what is the value to the county? How are we to know? The very definition of a chief executive officer is implicit in the role of providing the board policy critique and review in its policy determinations. In matters of less magnitude than this, common practice would be to expect such critical review in the normal course of operations. These contracts are clearly presented by the ad hoc committee. This in no way removes the oversight and responsibility of the CEO to fully review and consider all aspects of the proposals, bringing to the board an executive critique of the ad hoc report and contracts recommended for approval. The county has had on contract the services of Mike Sweeney, AMSWA general manager. This resource to the executive officer is unlimited. His expertise to fully evaluate the ad hoc recommendations has clearly not been utilized. Additionally, with a contract of this magnitude, outside evaluative services may be prudent and desirable. At this late moment, I hope you will consider the significant impact this contract decision has on ratepayers, residents, and county operations, and recommend that the executive office receive and review the ad hoc documents, returning to the board with analysis that can be weighed and reaching an informed decision. De facto support for escalation of monopoly pricing without critical review will negatively impact future related negotiations and cast strong doubt on the execution of the public trust that is board and executive responsibility.
Supervisor Smith, you said you sent that yesterday?
Correct. Yes, I did.
Yesterday, so—
Yes, to the executive officer. And I wanted this read into the record, because I think it's germane to what we're talking about here and concerns that the public has raised. And we haven't heard that from the executive officer, that that would be her recommendation. So I just wanted this to be part of the record, that I believe the process has gone terribly wrong, and I don't believe we should be acting on the ad hocs recommendations, solely on their recommendations. Thank you.
Supervisor Colfax.
Well, I was always entertained by the fact that Norman Duvall finished 20 years as a supervisor. And the last six months of his term as a supervisor, 20 years ago, Norman served 16 years, sorry, but that was 20 years ago, Norman Duvall finished up his career in a very, very bitter, very angry, very acrimonious, very divisive battle over solid waste management. It was ugly. It demeaned him, it demeaned the supervisors, and it had long-term implications for the way in which this board, that board, was regarded over the years. It took a while, it took a lot of work, people pulling together, making their compromises, understanding what was happening. But the impact of that, I find myself now, in the last six months of my term, for only 12 years, thank God, on the Board of Supervisors, ending up where Norman was. I feel maybe I've morphed into Norman or vice versa. This has been a very demoralizing process here. The Board of Supervisors followed process. I've seen here, just in this process here, where supervisors are told when and how they could be talking on certain issues. We've never done that in 12 years. I've been on the board, I never saw it in years before. There's been a collegiality, even when the diversity on this board was much greater nominally than it is at the present time. So what I think is happening here, and this concerns me very greatly, it's a long-term solution to a short-term problem. And when you make a 15-year correction, of course, under a crisis situation that we seem to be imagining ourselves to be in, it requires just stepping back and saying, let's take a closer look. Show me the money, show me the numbers. This is not, as the cliche goes, this is not rocket science. This is really pretty simple stuff, unless one has a predetermined outcome and one is not going to make decisions. I attribute this to the fact is that we have been going through some pretty tumultuous times here. We've had how many CEOs or CAOs in the last five to eight years? How many, what kind of turnover have we had in the CEO's office? 100% turnover in the last 16 months in the CEO's office. Everybody is new on the job. So why would the supervisors not be in a position to pretty much willy-nilly go about it however they like? And we've seen an economic downturn which has changed some of the values that would be implicated in any of the management of waste in Mendocino County as it is in the rest of the country. The price for recyclables has changed, the need for recyclables has changed, the state of flux and so forth. But this is economic, we're seeing here in this particular discussion, and some people have taken advantage of it, some individuals, not on this board necessarily, have taken advantage of this economically downturn and the chaos, and I'll use that term advisedly, the chaos within Mendocino County as it faces financial problems, while it faces personnel problems and so forth. So we're getting the kind of answers that probably are to be expected in this kind of a crisis. But this is not the kind of crisis that you commit the next 14 or 13 or 15 years to. And I am embarrassed to have to go home and say, what did you do today, Dad? Oh, I just gave away waste management, the dealing with our transfer station. Well, why would you do that? Oh, it's too complicated. It was, everybody got mad at each other, so I came home and made me a martini. But the reality is that in this particular case, all we need to do is step back, listen to what has been said, and request that staff take charge of this issue in terms of the simple variables in this particular situation. We don't have the numbers. Show me the money, okay? Show me the data. okay? Show me the data. Then I will be able to make a decision. So when I'm asked, why didn't the world do you do this, or why in the world did you not do that, I'm going to be able to say A, B, C, D, E, F and G, and a few other numbers, a few other variables. I talked to the gentlemen who brought this project forward. I was open to it until I saw it begin to run in a direction where there were notions somehow or other that privatization was a desired end, and therefore, that is something in this climate we need to buy into. It's unfashionable not to be for privatization. I think it'd be a mistake for us to just say, okay, we've had this debate. Thank you everybody for, for your input. And I do thank you. Thank you for your input, but we're going to vote anyhow. We don't really know how it's going to turn out, but what the heck? As they say in Sacramento, we're not going to be here 15 years from now. And that's the game that is played too much in American politics. We don't take responsibility for our bad decisions. And this may not be a bad decision. I hope it isn't. I hope it, I hope, I hope it is not a bad decision. But at the moment, I cannot honestly, and that's why I walked out of the room last week or the week before, whenever it was, it seems like forever. But that's why I walked out of the room, because I felt here we were abusing a process then. And I think here, I've been implicated in what has been an abusive process where passions got involved and ideology got involved. And now we can't even separate those out. But I'm saying, let's not do it now. Let's turn it over to staff. Do you know why? Because that's what we have staff for. That's why we pay them the big bucks. We, on this Board, don't have the time with all the obligations we have to give this the attention it desires, it deserves. That means we have staff people who are in the position to give us good advice, to give us fair advice, give us some advice. But for God's sake, staff, take on this problem in concert with Mr. Sweeney, our paid consultant, and get, show us the data that we need to make an intelligent decision. Please don't go forward with this right now. You may have to be explaining it to yourselves and your children and your grandchildren 15 years from now.
Supervisor Pinches.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Colfax referred to Supervisor DeValle being on this Board for 16 years. When he left, I come on this Board in 1995, and this Board was left with the dumps, the chain pulled across the gate and they were locked. It was company, small company in that time called Solid Waste to Willets that stepped forward. And we privatized the third district, Willets, Leightonville and Covelo areas. And it's been working, that's been 15 years ago. So that's been a good test, a good study of how privatization works in a solid waste issue. As far as the rate increases, I have some PowerPoints here that I left here in my drawer here since May 2009, when this Board, not the companies out there, but this Board increased the franchise fee from 7% to 12%. It said it was, there, where we did it, right there. And it says that it was going to support solid waste functions and reduce the net county cost. I got that there. Then shortly after that, we talk about, well, did we get the word out to do any better? Well, here's a sheet here that says that we sent out 65 invitations mailed out to trucking companies in Mendocino County, the cities of Fairfield, Vallejo, Backville, Redding, and so on, getting to try to get a better deal. You know, it was the county that raised the rates. It was for to bring a $212,000 increase, bringing in, I think, $195,000 or something like that, 295. But the, the point of it is, it wasn't the garbage companies that really has been the main increaser of our solid waste. It's the own county. And the reason we increased that from a 7% to a 12%, I voted against it because I said I didn't want to further subsidize an inefficient garbage operation. Well, the Board voted to do that, so we put another $290,000 of that 5% franchise fee that we took from the ratepayers out there and put it into a Budget Unit 4510, which is a solid waste budget. And we're still losing money. It's still a general fund drain. Probably in, as I said earlier, in the last dozen years, have been over $10 million in general fund that we've, don't have to spend. We talk about, well, what's the public get for this? Well, for the next 10-year period, by doing away with that drain in, in the general fund, that's 10 or 12 million dollars we're going to have to put into our, maybe our libraries, our museums, or whatever the people out there need and enjoy. But we're not going to put it down a funnel that goes to nowhere and losing it. We're going to have better service. We're going to have buyback services at these facilities. If we left them the way they are, they're going to have service reductions, hours reduced 50% and higher rates. They're, they're maintaining the same hours. This is a good deal for Mendocino County. It's a good deal for the ratepayers, and it's extremely good deal for Mendocino County government. The privatization issue, we privatized most of our contracts with mental health, solid, public health, social services are all with private companies anyway. Why is this public partnership such a bad word in this one issue in Mendocino County? We're doing, we do it everywhere. It's, it creates jobs. It creates the service that we're supposed to, we're supposed to hear, hear about service. You know, and we talk about, well, you know, if, if the amount of trash would just go up, then maybe we could go back to making money. Whoa, wait a minute. I thought that was what we're supposed to do is reduce our impact and our trash disposal and, you know, and use landfills less. I thought that's a good thing. All of a sudden, now, now we're talking about, oh, that's probably a bad thing? You know, in generally, this is a good proposal. And the reason we're going to privatize is because it works. It's a good public-private partnership, and we have a long-term, long-term county business that knows the business, has existing facilities to do it right, and also the ability to go out and improve our facilities, like at the South Coast, where the county, we don't have the ability to go out and borrow money. We couldn't go borrow any money at any interest rate. Private sector does. Private sector, they talk about the insurance. Well, one of the gentlemen got up and spoke, says, well, I don't know if Solid Waste to Willets has the ability to cover any huge liability claims. No, they don't. But Prudential Insurance or State Farm or whatever insurance agent there is, they have. That's the advantage, advantage the private sector has. All we're doing is taking advantage of those few things, putting together an agreement that's going to work for everybody. So I, I don't have any reservations about moving for this. It's a good thing for the county, and it's a good thing for the ratepayers. And it's, like I say, it's an extremely good thing. It's going to be a good thing for other county services, like our libraries and museums and things like that. Because before, we were having to take our general fund dollars to support Budget Unit 4510 solid waste. Now it'll free up those dollars to put to good things in this county.
Thank you. Supervisor Pinches. We're going to go forward on the vote. I, did you want to speak, Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have not yet had a go-around after the motion. But before we get there, I have a question of County Council. The question's been raised about the appropriateness of having two members of the Board of Supervisors participate in the ad hoc committee and help to negotiate the contract. And I will make the point that it was the, the direction of this Board that the ad hoc committee discuss and negotiate. But could you comment on whether this is appropriate or inappropriate, legally sufficient or not?
An ad hoc committee can be formed to do whatever the Board directs it to do. And in this instance, the ad hoc was formed to meet with Solid Waste to Willets and attempt to resolve final issues and negotiate the final terms of the agreement and bring it back as a recommendation to the full Board. And that's what was done. We have had ad hocks in the past that have negotiated agreements. The Coyote Valley Casino Agreement is a perfect example of an ad hoc committee negotiating a contract, a long-term contract, and bringing it to the full Board for approval. So it's not a process that's unusual, and it's not a process that's unacceptable.
Thank you. And to the CEO, the comments have been made. There's been no analysis by the executive office or by staff. I would point out that the executive officer, the County Council, Director of Transportation, and the Solid Waste Director participated fully in the ad hoc committee meetings. But I would appreciate it if the CEO would offer her opinion of the agreements that are before us and what the appropriate action is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been sitting here this afternoon listening, and I, I think that Mr. Dashill and Mr. Sweeney have done a good job of really explaining all the actions that have taken place. You know, this, this whole process has and continues to be under the direction of the Board, and that is the full Board. As I recall, there have been meetings and negotiations going back to 2008, and there have been multiple people involved and multiple reviews. As far as the cost benefit analysis, there was a cost benefit analysis done in 2009, and, and how quickly time flies when you're dealing with a process like this that has gone for over three years. That cost benefit analysis was done by the executive office under the former CEO. And I received that cost benefit analysis from this Board. So this Board has that cost benefit analysis, and every document that has been brought to this Board has been a public document. I think, can we have done this better? Of course. There's nothing that we can't do any better, that's for sure. But I do think that Mr. Dashill and Mr. Sweeney have crunched the numbers every way they can. And there's no way around the fact that the transfer stations lose money. The county has had to subsidize the transfer stations. And should this Board at any point in time have directed Mr. Dashill or the executive office to continue operating the transfer stations, my plan was to ask this Board to redirect general funds to those transfer stations. We know that last year, they were approximately $300,000 over budget. So I believe that without privatizing in the manner that we're doing this, there's no guarantee that there's not a cost to the county. Regarding the subject matter experts that we have had, certainly, Mr. Sweeney is a subject matter expert, and we have all utilized his expertise. And he has certainly communicated with all five of you at any time that he's needed to, and also with me. And I appreciate all the work that's been done. Regarding the fact that this is a bad deal for the public, and that there are no vendors in the community that could operate the transfer stations, that it is only county employees that could operate the transfer stations, I do not agree with that. I believe that the contract that has been negotiated is a good contract. I think it locks the county in as well to years of knowing what the service is and the cost, and knowing that there's no cost to the county, which indeed would be a cost to the taxpayer. I think that there are vendors out there, and certainly we have a vendor here before us today, that can provide this service and do a good service to the public and to the county. And at one point, we had talked about a possible enterprise fund, when we talked about leaving this service in the county, that we would operate it. We had thought if we did an enterprise fund and working the numbers, that we could go ahead and do this, and we could cover the costs. I would like to remind this Board and the public that we have an enterprise fund in the county, and that enterprise fund is mental health services. And everybody in this room knows that mental health services consistently is approximately a million dollars over budget every year. So I believe at this point in time that we have reached the best agreement that we can reach for the public, for the county, for the taxpayers and the ratepayers. And I think, you know, in retrospect, if maybe we would have taken all of the documents that we worked on and put them under one date, possibly the public could have recognized the fact that there have been multiple reviews, and certainly at least one thorough cost benefit analysis during this period of time. One final comment regarding Sonoma County. I appreciate the fact that Sonoma County has communicated with Mr. Sweeney. And I think that, I don't know if Mr. Sweeney has anything in writing from Sonoma County. If so, I would like to see that. I think that today, with how uncertain and the volatility throughout the markets that are supporting our county systems, I'm not certain that we can really depend on a lower rate from Sonoma County. Certainly, we all know Sonoma County is applying for a $290 million pension obligation bond. So, you know, I think that we have to look at all the facets involved when we're thinking about the cost to the county. And again, from the executive office, I believe that we have reached a good agreement. I think the cost benefit analyses that have been done could show that. And I think we should move forward. And that is my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angelo. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your statement. I think we have gone quite a length of time. I do not think that I need to go further. I believe it is time to call for the vote. Under Rule 19, if, if you just quickly, I want to wrap it up. We need to go forward. Both of you have had sufficient time, taken my time as well. Supervisor McCowen, and then Supervisor Smith, and then I'm calling for the vote.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Smith first. But I will point out, although it was a lengthy comment, I've spoken once to the issue so far. Supervisor Smith.
Well, go ahead.
No, I defer to you. I'm invoking my right to close the discussion as the Chair of the ad hoc as per Rule 19.
You're correct, Supervisor McCowen. Thank you for pointing that out. Supervisor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think a few final comments. I don't believe, as the CEO said, that there was ever a cost benefit analysis of the franchise extensions. I believe that we're talking about a financial analysis of what Supervisor Colfax accurately says is really the small, short-term issue. And I think my major point was, we don't, and I have asked for before substantive information that talks about a 14-year contract that we don't have a cost benefit analysis on. No one has done that for the interest of the citizens. We don't know that they're getting a good deal. The deal that they were going to get prior to this one was, in fact, a better deal with no franchise fee increases. Now we're talking about 1.85% in this subsequent document that we've received. I don't believe that that was ever analyzed. And I believe that it was a very cursory, cursory analysis at best, under the previous CEO in the executive office. So I, I think that the public's made the point, they want to see it. And there's nothing that's substantive in this report. So I think that what we should have had is all those cumulative documents brought forward. If it's such a good deal, and we, we, you know, there's supposedly information that's telling us, we've already done it, we know it is, that needed to go on the website with these documents so the public could, could be aware of that. The calls I've received, which have been overwhelmingly not supportive of this, coming particularly from the South Coast, talked about the rate increases when this particular hauler took over the South Coast area, significant increases. And then we're now building one in that they're going to have to absorb. So I think that, that that is very problematic. I also do not agree with the CEO that there's a, that it's comparable in terms of talking about mental health as an enterprise fund as comparative to solid waste. Mental health in this county, we have lots and lots of mandates with respect to the delivery of mental health services. This is a rather simple operation, and it's fee for service. So I think that the county has been remiss in not addressing the fee for service issue with respect to solid waste. The supervisors talked about that issue for years in supporting fee increases to make it, excuse me, be a standalone operation. So I don't think there's any comparison with, with mental health. It's a completely different operation. And I would ask my colleagues, Supervisor Colfax had, has said, please do not go forward today. Please accept the ad hoc report, the documents connected with it. And then we really need to provide the comprehensive cost benefit analysis and review and critique that would bring to the Board a recommendation that has specifics in it about why this is or is not good for the citizens and for county operations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Smith. Closing statement. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to cover a few points that actually weren't mentioned before. I received comments from the public. They're very concerned, and it's been said here today, we're giving away the transfer stations. Supervisors Smith and Colfax in their letter said, we're dismantling the system of transfer stations. Nothing could be further from the truth. These agreements actually preserve the transfer stations because we retain full control. It's a, a contract, a lease, an operation agreement. The county retains full control of management, setting policy, full control of the land. If the county would, and let's be clear, that the leaseholds for each of these five transfer stations covers a fraction of the county-owned land in that location, from less than 5% to approximately 30% of the land the county owns. But the county retains... But the county retains full control over the entire parcel, if it makes sense for the county to do it, to engage in such things as methane collection, solar, biochar, or gasification. The operator is obliged to cooperate with the county in any of those processes if we choose to do them. We do retain full flow control over where all of the solid waste goes, the scrap metal, the recyclables, green waste, wood waste. We also retain the right to add additional items to the waste stream for diversion, such as food waste. That'll be implemented in the North County franchise area in 2013. There's been a lot of concerns about privatization. And yet, 90% of the county's solid waste is currently handled by private companies, including 100% of the curbside and drop box collection. I have yet to hear an answer to my question, why is it not okay for these five small county transfer stations to be operated by one of the same private operators that picks up 90% of the trash in the county? The North Coast Long Hall Transfer Station, when it is built, and I believe it will be because it's economically and environmentally advantageous to do so, and the city of Fort Bragg and the county of Mendocino have been working cooperatively to secure a site. They will work cooperatively to secure the financing. And when it is built, they will put out a contract to operate it, and that will go to a private operator. No one's raised any concern about that. The South Coast improvements, when they are built, will be owned by the county. One reason it has to be a long-term agreement is so that the private operator can recover the up to $400,000 cost of investment that will be made. The fear has been raised that mandatory collection is somehow associated with this. Nothing could be further from the truth. And since mandatory collection is not a part of the agreements, we don't need to put a clause in saying it's not part of the agreements. It simply isn't. I don't believe there's any support from anyone on this board for mandatory collection in any of the unincorporated area. So it's really just a non-issue. And in closing, I would like to say that the comments continue to be made, that there is no cost benefit analysis, we don't have the numbers, we don't know what's going on. Here's the cost benefit analysis for me. We and the county general fund subsidy, which has been a minimum of $300,000 in years past. We have no guarantee that we won't still operate at a loss if we fail to take this agreement. Another number, the private operator is obligated to make up to a $400,000 improvement at South Coast to guarantee rate stability going forward. Another number, the transfer stations will be required to stay open 100% of the hours that they're open now. And in fact, I know from talking with Mr. Ward, he plans to increase hours at Leightonville, perhaps at other locations. The employees will be offered 100% of their current hourly rate and 100% or more of their current hours. If the stations are open more hours, they'll get more hours. The concern about what will prices do in the future, it's written in both the transfer station and the franchise contracts. Rates will adjust based on the Consumer Price Index, the cost of fuel, the tipping fee, which we know will be stable, and the cost of recyclables. And if the cost of recyclables go up, that'll benefit the ratepayers.
Supervisor.
One more number, the profit for solid waste of bullets for operating the transfer stations is capped at $25,000. Anything over that goes to subsidize the gate fee for green waste, wood waste, and scrap metal. The numbers are there, the analysis is there for anyone who chooses to review it. I do apologize to my colleagues for the extent this has become a contentious issue. And yet, I'm not sure it's that controversial. The clarion call was sounded far and wide to the public to try and pack the room. Very incendiary emails sent out telling all the terrible things this contract would do. By my count, approximately a dozen people are here interested in the issue, and only four of them spoke to it. So I think most of the people, most of the public understands these agreements are in the public interest, they're in the county's interest, and we should go forward.
Okay. We are going to vote by the button. Supervisors, please vote.
Motion passes, three to two, with Supervisor Smith and Colfax dissenting.
Thank you, Clerk. Now, we're going to move on with the agenda to item number 12A. Is the sheriff?
He's back there.
Oh, okay. 12A, discussion and possible direction regarding the status of illegal marijuana cultivation in the Mendocino National Forest, approval of correspondence to affected counties, and referral to Criminal Justice Standing Committee. County Council, I'm going to let you go forward with the introduction and.
I'll start it.
Handle it.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
On August 3rd, at our meeting in Covelo, after a presentation by representatives from the Mendocino National Forest, the board directed staff to report back to the board regarding the possibility of imposing a declaration, local declaration of emergency with respect to the issues that are going on in the forest regarding illegal marijuana cultivation. I have taken the time to look at that issue, and we have a couple of responses. First of all, with respect to the declaration of local emergency, is my recommendation that that would not be appropriate at this time. I don't think it will get us anywhere, and it's not an effective tool for the particular issue. I prepared a memo to the board on August 13th, 2010, explaining my rationale and giving further suggestions. And that memo is available to the public, if the public would like to review it. And I can answer questions regarding that memo if the board so desires. Since the discussion on August 3rd, the sheriff has come up with a very wonderful idea to engage the other five counties that are part of the Mendocino National Forest. And to that extent, he has invited representatives from the other five counties to a symposium that, according to the agenda summary, was to be held on November 18th and 19th. But since publication of the agenda summary, we realized that CSAC meeting, the CSAC meeting is happening that week. So we've changed the date for the symposium to December 2nd and 3rd, and I'll let the sheriff talk about that as well. In addition to the memorandum regarding the declaration of emergency and another option that I've proposed to the board, we've also prepared a draft letter that, to be sent, to be signed by the chair and to be sent to the other five counties, encouraging their support and encouraging them to attend the symposium, and also their support for collaborating with our county in terms of addressing these issues with our state and federal representatives. So with that, I'll let, turn this over to the sheriff, and he can explain what his plan is, and I can answer any question that the board may have.
Sheriff Alman. Thank you, County Council. Is it on now?
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you. Madam Chair, and members of the board, this is a project that the sheriff's office has been working on for three months. We've closely followed an operation in Fresno County referred to as SOS, Save Our Sierras, which Sheriff Margaret Mims orchestrated, and this was her second year of being a very successful, taking back the sierras for the public. It doesn't just include eradication and elimination of marijuana. It includes reclaiming the land. This year alone, she and her employees and volunteers, and volunteers are a very important part of this, have removed over 50 miles of black water pipe from public lands in the sierras. And 100% of this has been put into the recycling, and they're actually making progress. And for the last three months, the sheriff's office has been planning an operation for the summer of 2011. I know that sounds like a long ways away, but Margaret Mims, sheriff, has assured me that it takes 12 months to plan these, it's a very expensive operation, and it involves the cooperation and coordination of many state, local, and federal agencies. And so, we do have six counties that all have a portion of the Mendocino National Forest. We spoke about this on August 3rd in Covelo, it was mentioned five. Well, the true answer is six, because we unintentionally didn't include the county of Colusa. So we have Colusa, Tahima, Trinity Lake, Mendocino, and Glenn County that all have ownership of, the responsibility of a portion of Mendocino National Forest. And what we've had in the past is we've had the arbitrary county lines where law enforcement goes and takes care of their problems, and we're just, I'll associate, I'll equate it to a ping pong ball. We're all, we're knocking the ping pong ball into somebody else's jurisdiction and thinking that we're taking care of the problem, and we're not taking care of the problem. And so, in December, when all six counties meet, and that'll be here in Ukiah, we will have county councils, we will have sheriffs, we will have district attorneys, we will have CEOs and CAOs, and hopefully, we'll have representatives from each member, each of the Board of Supervisors from all six counties, and we'll have representatives from the federal agencies that ultimately are responsible for the patrol and enforcement of laws in the national forests. However, they simply do not have the personnel to take care of the problem. And so, what Mendocino County is doing is we're trying to take the bull by the horns and say, let's just, we're all in this together, we're all for one, one for all, let's try to take care of this problem. And that's where we are right now. The December 2nd and 3rd surely isn't going to just focus on the operation for next year, it's going to focus on where we are right now. It's going to have a threat assessment that's going to discuss what we're facing right now, and financially, as well as logistically, to take care of our problem. So I'm looking forward to this. We're coordinating this with several local agencies, so we can get as many representatives as possible. Of course, some of this is going to be open to the public, and some of the tactical operation planning by law enforcement is not going to be open to the public. But we're, at this point, at the, beyond the preliminary planning stages, we're getting into the, finalizing the budget. I'm working closely with county council on this, because she has some great ideas. She's working this before, in this agenda. So that's where we are right now. I agree with county council regarding the not declaring an emergency right now. If you remember, in June of 2008, I declared a state of emergency for the county on June 21st, when we had our fires. And what happened after that, what that triggered, is the daily meetings for the Board of Supervisors to get briefings to what's going on. And while I would love to brief you on a daily basis what's going on, I don't know if we're to that point right now. There's many things that we're trying to take care of. And I don't mind briefing you as to where we are each week, of where we are for the rest of the remaining marijuana season, of where we're going. We're focusing on public lands, we're focusing on trespass grows, we're focusing on environmental degradation, we're focusing on large commercial operations, we're focusing where water's being stolen, we're focusing on neighborhood complaints, and we're working very closely with the county council's office on the 9.31 exemption, which we have over, I believe we hit the number of 10 today, of people who want to pay the county up to $3,500 each to have an exemption for 9.31. And so, we're making progress. And so, just because you're not getting a weekly report doesn't mean that we're not doing things, and we're trying to make it work. And I really appreciate what county council's doing, because she's the catalyst of getting this done, and working with the federal agencies, specifically Mike Thompson's office, who I've been on the phone with almost every day, of getting resources, because that's what it's going to boil down to next year. It's going to boil down to, do we have the resources to do an operation, which is going to be between $300,000 and $400,000, to reclaim our public lands? And I believe that we can find those resources with, from the agencies that take the responsibility. They've told me they have the responsibility, but they're looking for assistance with personnel, and that's where the sheriff's office is coming into play.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. I would also ask that you invite CSAC to participate in the meeting. There is a committee, and I'm sure.
Marijuana committee.
Other areas that are dealing with the same issue.
The CSAC Marijuana Committee is really looking at the medical marijuana component and the operation of dispensaries. And unfortunately, it does include counties such as Marin, Sonoma, some of the counties that are not within the Mendocino National Forest. This particular symposium is dealing specifically with, and we can invite them, but I'm just saying that this is what it's about.
But we do have policy committee staff where these issues, I'm not sure what the committee name is. I don't think it's called Criminal Justice, but there is a CSAC Policy Committee, and there.
So you want those members, okay.
There is a staff person.
Yeah.
Because if we, if we're going to go and maybe advocate for funding at a federal level, you know, we probably should inform CSAC staff, because they do go back to DC quite often.
Right.
Ms. Smith is, Supervisor Smith is our representative to NACO. I mean, there's some opportunities here that we need to look at, and I would certainly invite them, they can choose not to come. But that particular policy committee for CSAC has an email, I've never participated in it, but they do have an email list of those county supervisors throughout the state that do.
Okay.
So I'm just suggesting that it might be a good idea.
I should also add, I've been in contact with a representative from Senator Feinstein's office, who is interested in this issue and is wanting information. And we've been working with him to provide him with all of the appropriate information at this point.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, one more thing. It seems like December 2nd and 3rd is a long ways away. And one of the reasons that we have planned it for that, it's going to be post-November election.
Yeah.
And we're going to have an idea about Proposition 19.
Sure.
And hopefully, we'll have some people who will have some preliminary, if it passes preliminary direction, at least legal direction, of where we're going to go, because that's going to play into the non-public land enforcement. So that's part of the planning strategy we're doing.
Thank you. Supervisor Pinches, then McCowen.
Tom, I don't understand how this vote in November is going to have any effect. I mean, pre, whichever way the vote goes, it's still illegal to go in the Mendocino National Forest and grill pot, right?
I understand Supervisor Pinches.
Okay, and I understand that affects the transportation. But my problem, and I certainly want to get Boards of Supervisors involved, that's the intention of this letter, but my, and when you really think about this, if you talk about strictly eradication efforts, that's like the dog chasing its tail. Because Supervisor McCowen stated in Covelo, you know, there's always going to be another drug cartel or whatnot that think they can go in and replace the one that just got eradicated or, and as far as the cleanup efforts, does it really make a lot of sense to spend money to go clean up 10 sites while at the same time, there's 20 more sites being, stuff being hauled in there? I really think it comes down to, and that's why I use of taking back a forest, we've got to virtually take back a forest, and that means to take control of it. I think there's only seven entry points in the Mendocino National Forest, right? In the spring, there's less than that because of the snow. My point of it is, you know, years ago, when I went in the forest, and this was something I said in Covelo, when you went into the forest, you had to get a camping permit, you had to make sure your dog was licensed, you had to do, we're talking 35 years ago. Now, everybody zips right by the ranger station, nobody stops. If we don't put some sort of controls of who's going in there, what they're packing in there, then I think we can spend every dollar that Feinstein or Congressman Thompson or anybody else can get us, just to pack it back out. I don't, I think we're going to get, it's going to be the dog chasing its tail. So unless we get some, some sort of checkpoints, where we at least have a control, for instance, it used to be, when you went in the forest, if you signed up, you was going to be there for three days, and you didn't come out in three days, they come looking for you. You know, I mean, we could have some controls, like I say, we're not talking, it's not like access from I-5. I think there's seven access points, good access points. So I think that would, that would be something that we have to focus. I'd like to certainly be involved in some of these meetings, because frankly, I don't think, and I'm concerned that law enforcement is going to be totally talking about, well, this is the money we got for eradication, so that means we're going to hire this many helicopters and put this many boots on the ground. Or if they talk about cleanup, they're going to say, well, it's going to cost us so much to clean up this site and so much to clean. I just think we're going to have the dog chasing its tail. I want to, in order to take back the forest, we've got to take control of it in the first place. And I think that's the root of the problem. We went from a process to where anybody going in the national forest was kind of watched in what they were and how they went in for. Now, there's, because of budget cuts, there's nobody watching, so it's, and if we don't get back to, like I say, taking and control of the forest, I don't think we'll ever get it back. it back because it's such a large area and a growing season isn't that long, you know, they go in there for what? They start maybe after the snow melts in June or even late July, and they go in and three or four months, they come out with their product and that's it. So to me, it's got to be more than about talking about eradication or talking about cleanup of garden sites. That's my view of it.
Okay.
Johnny, this could be one of the things, could be one of the things that you and I actually agree on. And-
Actually, there's several.
There's several. But remember what I do for a living, and I'm not a social service worker and I'm not an environmental cleanup person, I'm a law enforcement officer. And one of the reasons that we're having a symposium and inviting the people we do is to greatly enlarge the scope, this is, we're referring to it as 6-1-1. There's six counties, one forest, and one problem. And when you talk about law enforcement and paying to do the cleanup and so forth, there's some marijuana gardens up there that have infrastructure with water that's underground. The infrastructure has been there for years. And I'm saying that we're going to go in there and we're going to remove infrastructure, we're going to, we're going to return the land to where it was and where it should be, and that's where we're going to start making a difference. Of course, we'd like to have the guard shacks, but the question is, is if I ask you and you ask me of who's going to pay for a 24/7 guard shack, six months of the year, the answer's going to be the same, surely not Mendocino County taxpayers. And so there's several ideas we have. I think that we should look at some inventive ways to create money to help with the cleanup that I'd love to speak with your Criminal Justice Subcommittee on. I think that there's many other things, but as long as you're looking at your perspective, Johnny, as long as I'm looking at my perspective and someone else is looking at their perspective, we're surely not going to make progress because that's exactly why we are where we are right now, because that's the way we've been doing business for those 35 years. Well, let's enlarge the scope and let's invite all the stakeholders here to say, what are our concerns? Forest Service, these are our concerns. How can we get our Forest Service, our Mendocino National Forest, a gem in our crown right now? How can we return it to the public, to its rightful owners? And that's what the goal is. It's surely not going up there and strictly doing law enforcement. But yes, there are going to be some costs of helicopters, there are going to be costs of boots on the ground, but there's also going to be costs associated with returning the land where it should be. So we actually agree on this, Johnny.
If I may, Madam Chair, to further this, one of the people I was talking to, I come up with, I thought, a real unique idea. If there's seven entry points, and let's say you just reduce that to three entry points, then you're not staffing seven checkpoints, you're only staffing three checkpoints, and as you mentioned, you're only talking about a couple, two, three months in the spring. It's not like you have to check them in December or anything. So I mean, I think there's a lot of different ideas and ways it can come up with, but I just don't want it to get totally focused on eradication and cleanup.
You haven't heard that from me. You haven't heard, that's my only focus. I truly believe the big piece of the pie involves everything to do we can to improve public safety and return the land to where it is. And we've looked at the access, and I assure you that each of the six counties are going to say, we want to have our one access to the forest. And so that obviously minimizes it to at least six accesses there. And so there's lots of things we're thinking about, but please don't forget, Johnny, that the day and age that we live, we have technology that can do more than you and I could do in a 24-hour period. And we're truly looking at some technological advances that I'm surely not going to discuss right now, but it will help us and assist us into finding out who the real bad guys are.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'd like to thank Supervisor Pinches for kind of spearheading this issue and making sure that we made it an issue before the board at our meeting in Covelo initially in the continuation. I'd like to thank Sheriff Allman and County Council Nadell for the work that they've done on this issue, preparing for today. And that's about all I have to say, other than I totally support the effort. I think it'll be very interesting to see what comes out of the conference. I think a regional effort in this is absolutely essential. It's much bigger than any one county, and of course, it's much bigger than the ability of all of the counties together to fund it. And that's where the federal authorities come in. I think we have a compelling case that this would be an appropriate place for the federal government to invest some money to take back the forest. To that end, the letter should also be copied to Senator Boxer as well.
Right.
And perhaps even give them a phone call before you send it out so you can say we've been working with both of their offices. Also, I don't recall if someone mentioned the correction to include Colusa because there are six counties.
It's in there.
It's in there.
Okay, good, because I didn't see it in the staff, the updated one.
Right.
They have 67 square miles.
I would count five, but I didn't count Mendocino.
You didn't count Mendocino, that's on the top of the letterhead. Yeah, and I just want to say that, you know, the current contract that the Sheriff's Department has with the Department of Agriculture to enforce the laws within the forest is only for $20,000, and that's not much. That's not even a quarter-time deputy patrolling the area. So I think some aggressive approach to getting, for the next fiscal year to get that contract increased could also be helpful to Mendocino County. But Tom's right, you know, this is not just limited to Mendocino County, this is a six-county issue.
And Senator Boxer will be on the coast.
Right.
I'm not able to go when she is, but I think it might, we might be able to set up a private meeting. I'm not sure or not, we need to talk about that.
We can look at that. The other issue that was discussed on the 3rd was a referral to the Criminal Justice Committee, referring this issue in general to the Criminal Justice Committee. Your agenda allows for that today. It's up to you as to whether or not you want it referred or you want us to just continue to report back to the full board.
Okay, our Criminal Justice Standing Committee is Supervisors Colfax and McCowen. I'd like to hear from the two supervisors as to how they feel about that, if it's appropriate or we go forward with staff continuing their planning.
There's another option too.
And there's another option?
To put it in Public Resources. Now, Mendocino National Forest is a public resource, so I think we could, I get, what I'm saying is I'm on that and I'd be, I'd like to be involved in it, is all I'm saying.
Okay. Supervisor Smith.
Well, Madam Chair, I had a, do you want to finish the discussion about the appropriate referral because mine was a different comment?
Okay, yours is a different comment. Why don't you go on with the different comment? And we'll just put into the record that Supervisor Pinches suggested it go to Public Resources, and I believe that's his committee that he sits on, a standing committee along with Supervisor Colfax?
So?
Yes, okay. Oh, I have it here.
My concern there is that, obviously, as this moves forward, this committee would not have me sitting on it. It would have to go to ad hoc.
Well, all standing-
Nothing wrong going to an ad hoc.
Yeah, all standing committees have to complete their work by the end of the year, so it would go on as an ad hoc if there was more business. I don't see there being more business, I don't think, as we move into the future.
And you could hold off even moving it into the, any kind of committee at this point. I mean, we're talking September at this, right now, and then, I mean, we can continue to report to the full board.
Okay, and just for everybody's information, Supervisor Pinches and Colfax are on Public Resources.
I could start that.
Hang on. Oh, okay.
Well-
We have two other supervisors that want to speak.
Yeah, this is relevant to this conversation.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I think our Sheriff Allman has shown his leadership abilities in Mendocino County, and if he can keep everybody on the same page in Mendocino County, I have no doubt he can't keep, that he can keep five other counties on task on this. So as long as he's, I view this, this, because it is a law enforcement issue, and if he would just kind of be the chairman or the spearhead of this and whatever he needs assistance from this board or any other of the five county boards, I think that would probably be the way-
So don't assign it to the standing committee.
So I don't think we need at this point in time to put it into a committee, but I think we ought to convey to the sheriff that we're here, and certainly I'm here, on this issue to do anything or travel anyplace I can to help you with whatever we need to move forward. All I want to make sure is this issue doesn't get dropped.
Well, let me assure you two things. I will assure you that the December meeting's going to happen, and I will assure you that the operation next summer's going to take place. And everything else is going to hinge on resources. But those two things will occur, and it'll be a successful, productive operation. That being said, I've been in touch with the Governor's Secretary, Matt Bittenhausen. He's the Secretary of the Office of Emergency Services, and at this point, I'm looking forward to coming to you in the next two weeks with an obligation from the county or from the state to allow me to fund a full-time person for nine months preparing for the operation next year. And it's going to, it's surely not just going to be law enforcement. It's going to be an incident command system that, under the fire department direction there of, we are going to have everything covered, and before it goes, the operation starts, the board is going to be fully aware what's going to happen. This isn't a secret operation. Part of our strategy is absolutely next year, advertising to every possible person that the Mendocino National Forest is going to be raided next year. It's not a secret. Because the first thing we need to do is decrease by 20 or 30% of the people who are going up there. But the people who choose to go up there and grow are the ones who we are going to focus on.
Tom, I'd like to change that wording a little bit, instead of saying the Mendocino National Forest is going to be raided next year. You've kind of heard that before. Why don't we say we're going to take back the Mendocino National Forest?
Okay.
Thank you Supervisor.
Tomato, tomato, but we're going to take it back. And hopefully, we're going to deliver it to the Forest Service in good condition.
I want to move forward. Supervisor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment a little bit on the letter, but I want to pick up where Supervisor McCowen, I believe, left off because I found the same omission of not having Senator Boxer. It's true that Senator Feinstein's on the Appropriate Appropriations Committee, which is the interior that lends her political capital to this situation, probably very advantageous. But we certainly don't want to leave out from the body of the letter Supervisor Boxer's name, because I think she would show an interest in it as well, and we certainly want to, as I think Supervisor McCowen said, we want to call the office and if that's not Washington or Sacramento, or Washington or San Francisco, and give them the heads up on that and begin to engage with them on the topic. So that would be true as well as Senator Boxer at the CC level below. And I think, we can't forget that the U.S. Forest Service would be our major partner here, so we certainly don't want to be sending out a letter about the fore, about lands under their control, the Mendocino National Forest, without having them. So U.S. Forest Service, I think, should definitely be part of the CC list, as should, I think, our-
Department of Agriculture.
Yes, Department of Agriculture slash United States Forest Service, and that would be whatever levels you think are appropriate. But I think the district supervisor always needs to be apprised, Mr. Contreras certainly, if not other levels of the Forest Service. But I think as our sheriff said, that there are some entities at the state level that I think also should be, we need to make sure everyone's apprised of sort of where we're going. And I think this is a way to get that information out, although the addressees are the other boards of supervisors that are affected. So, you know, my thinking when we talked about this in Covelo immediately was, gee, we really ought to be looking at potentially a special appropriations, a pilot project, something that would bring even national attention to a very, very critical issue on public lands, and that could Mendocino, sort of at the helm of this, possibly be the entity that leads the direction of how we would solve this, that could be a national model. Because this is happening elsewhere, I don't think it's even just within the state of California. So I think we need to approach it with an eye of that, and that's going to be internal staff that are going to work on that with respect to how we would bring forward a request with our other partners to actually get money. Because I think the sheriff has said, the limitation to this is only really going to be resources. So if we could actually begin to craft an actual request for dollars and fine-tune that with the help of our partners, I think that's, it's none too soon to really get going on that.
With that in mind, Supervisor Smith, I apologize for neglecting this. We're planning a three-year operation. I'm not saying years two and three are going to be as, such an impact as year one. However, there's going to be absolute follow-up of intelligence gathering throughout the next 24 months after this to find out if we're making a difference as Supervisor Pinches is acquired. And one thing that I have failed to mention also is we have recently acquired a $48,000 grant from BLM, and BLM has property that joins some of the Covelo Forest Service property that we're looking forward to working with BLM on, with this to assist with the operation.
So we can get him and another one of this. Supervisor McCowen, then it's your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that I agree there's really no need to refer this to committee, and I think it would be more appropriate to continue to have the sheriff report any significant developments or any requests for any help he might need from us to the full board.
Thank you.
Okay, so then if that's the case, the only thing you would be approving today is just, we'll amend this letter to reflect the appropriate CCs and then get it sent out and, under the chair's signature.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Can Clerk please read back the motion? Okay, we need a restatement of the motion.
Just send the letter with the adjustments to it.
And it would be the August 12th, and Supervisor Smith did some additions to the letter as far as who it's addressed to and the CCs, and it was seconded by Supervisor McCowen?
No.
Did I get it wrong? Oh, you made the motion and you seconded. Who was the second?
I seconded.
Supervisor Smith.
Supervisor Smith stated the motion, I moved the motion, she seconded.
Okay, okay, you were getting me confused. And for the media, I do have some more copies coming out. It won't be the final, but of the letter we're going to send out, but at least you'll have a copy and you heard the comment. Okay, we're going to call for the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none. Thank you Sheriff.
Could I ask Sheriff one more question?
Okay, Supervisor Pinches.
You're welcome, Madam Chair, but there is something very significant that just happened.
What's that?
This is a second marijuana vote that's been taken by this board this month that's been a 5-0 vote. And I'm not saying that with any sarcasm, I'm saying that with some deep appreciation that we all understand where we are on this and that the board is supportive of us trying to regain our land. And I truly appreciate the board for their 5-0 vote in Covelo and for the one today.
Okay, thank you Sheriff.
Tom, I don't want to put you on the spot because it's kind of a, there's been several letters and whatnot about the community or groups of people getting involved in this. What, do you have a, have you thought about that? I mean, would you like the public involvement or, I mean, or you want to keep this, the people that you have control on?
Supervisor, I believe volunteers in this operation are going to play a very integral part, and what I do not want is I don't want vigilanteism. However, people who want to assist us with being good witnesses, and there's some volunteers who are helping us with some technology that's assisting us, and we're going to get into the need for volunteers of cleaning up and so forth, all of these are going to come into play. And it's part of our plan that we're going to go to the public and we're going to ask the public for assistance, and we're going to, we're not just going to take anybody who walks in the street on the day of the operation, but if somebody wants to help, they're going to go through some training, and we're going to do what we can to utilize a huge volunteer force that is calling my office every day.
Yeah, well, that's where I've been referring people to, is to your office.
So you're the one, got it.
Okay. Well, they've been calling me what to do and I says contact.
We appreciate it, actually. We're looking forward to working with a lot of people, but I do not want vigilanteism.
Okay, thank you Sheriff, very, very much. I do want to go back and do some cleanup. Mr. DeShield has been here all day with us. I'd like to go to Agenda Item 6A, Department of Transportation Director's Report.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, good afternoon. Howard DeShield, Director of Transportation. You know, I will be brief because the hour is late, but on June 15th, I had actually brought this little chart that's in your director's report. I never got a chance to talk to you because you were busy that day as well. But, you know, there was a huge change made at the fiscal year, July 1st, where we no longer have sales tax on gas. All the taxes collected have been put into the excise tax, which has brought it up to, and again, these are my numbers, you know, by my calculations, 30, 35.3 cents where before it had been 18 cents. It's really no new money according to the state, it's the same money we would have been collecting with the six and, the standard state six and a quarter sales tax that had been charged on gas, so it was supposed to be neutral. However, you'll notice that, and if I've got my colors right, for the first time, instead of just a local, which was blue, and state sharing of gas tax, we've got new categories- of just a local, which was blue, and state sharing of gas tax, we've got new categories. For instance, in green, a payback on transportation bonds. In the maroon color, now we're actually identifying STIP. And starting next year, the state is going to identify for the first time sort of a dedicated amount to the shop, which is the State Highway Occupational Preservation Program. Phil Dow says that so much better than I do.
Basically, this Caltrans maintenance budget.
Correct. And what I find interesting here, number one, you'll note that it shows the blue getting bigger, but really, that was the same amount we would have been receiving from Prop 42. And as you know, over the last 10 years that we've had Prop 42, I think we've only got it half those years because it was borrowed and then paid back a year later. And it's been a real sporadic funding source. So anyway, that's great, boy. That really looks like the counties and cities, the locals, just got an explosion of money. I'm a little concerned, a couple things. I was here last week. I didn't stay to the end of your meeting, but a week ago, Monday, the MCAG completed its workshop. I know Supervisor Smith was there. Supervisor Pinches missed that meeting a week ago, Monday. But one of the, just things that I'm watching is that as you look at this chart, the state may take the position, well, you know, the locals now have a lot of money that they're getting for their transportation, and the state's just getting a little bit for the shop. So, you know, most of the STIP is going to go to state projects. And it was interesting at the MCAG board meeting that one of the policies that the staff put forth was that they were really no longer going to support rehab projects. And being you weren't there, Supervisor Pinches, I don't know if you got that report. But in the past, STIP has given not just the county, but many of the cities, you know, we've identified projects to simply improve our pavements. And my thinking is we're going to see less and less of that. The way I see this is we may see the CTC, which controls all that maroon money, directing it really more towards the big projects. And I just think we need to be vigilant, vigilant at MCAG, and we need to really watch how this, because it's all kind of gotten thrown up in the air now and changed. So I'm just a little, little concerned, and I wanted to let you guys see this chart and ask you to stay tuned and pay attention.
Thank you very much, Howard. Supervisor Pinches, we need to move forward.
Yeah, Howard, we've kind of seen this coming, and that's why I pushed and whatnot. We have some county roads in our system that don't qualify for some state dollars. And that's why we have to push, the road I live on, a Bell Springs Road, an example, I think is Or Springs Road, that don't qualify for some pots of money. And that's why we need to push to get those roads to where they do qualify, because if they change this criteria, it will allow some money to come in for those roads.
You're a little, just a correction, Supervisor Pinches, that all the roads, even the local roads, would qualify for the state money. The money you're thinking of as the federal money has to be an on-system road unless it's a bridge.
Yeah, but it comes through the state approval, right?
No, it's really the money we get through federal highways. And while Caltrans administers all that money, it really is a different appropriation. It's a federal appropriation.
I know, but if it don't qualify for the state dollars and the state don't administer it, that's where the state ties in, right?
Well, what the real problem is, is the CTC, the way I see policy going forward, and Phil Dow should address this better, and next time you're at the MCAG meeting, you could even talk to him about it. The concern I have is that the STIP dollars are more and more going to be directed to the on-system roads, which are all the state highways, and the 10% of our roads that are on-system. Let me see. And you're correct, you know, we have requested to add several road segments, including Bell Springs Road, into the federal or on-system road system, which gives them access to federal dollars, but it also, you know, might give them a better chance with the CTC. It's just, in the past, you know, those STIP dollars were more available. I think they're going to be less available. They're going to be more focused to bigger projects. It's just something that I thought you should be aware of.
So how is that process going to get those system roads that we have to where they qualify?
Well, I've submitted, I haven't heard back from Caltrans.
Is that a...
This board supported the proposal going forward. And so did MCAG supported the proposal going forward. Trinity County and Humboldt County said they would support that.
So how...
I haven't heard from Caltrans.
Is that a, normally a short term, you don't know?
I've never done it before. I've never put a road into on-system status.
Okay. Good. But it's in the, it's in the works.
It's, the request is in. The request is in. I don't know.
Okay, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another good point I'd like to make, Madam Chairs, with these bidding results coming in, probably in a neighborhood of 35 to 50 percent under engineer's estimate, these road dollars are going a long ways.
And that's good, because they didn't go so far before. Okay, we're going to Agenda Item Number Three, and that's Approval of the Minutes. We have a number before you. The August 3rd points out the corrections made.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of all four sets of minutes with the corrections to August 3rd.
That's amazing. I'll second.
We have a motion by Supervisor McCowen, a second by Supervisor Pinches, to approve the minutes with corrections or as corrected for July 27th, August 3rd, August 4th, and August 10th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? We're going to go forward, and now we are on Item 5B, Chief Executive Officer Report. Ms. Angelo?
Madam Chair, members of the board, very briefly, at this late hour, I'd just like to report that I continue to do the department visits as I've reported to this board earlier on, and I find them to be very interesting. I'm getting a lot of comments from the staff, and there certainly is an underlying theme with all the departments. The questions seem to be very similar, if not the same, through all the departments. So I think the meetings are quite positive, and they're also making some suggestions. And one of the suggestions that repeatedly has come up is around an actual suggestion program. And I think this county may have had something like that in the past. Certainly in the county I came from, we had a suggestion program called Do It Better by Suggestion. And staff would make recommendations or comments, suggestions about anything that had to do with cost-saving measures or just improving services. And so it's something that the executive office will be looking at with human resources. I'd also like to comment on the centralized reception area that we've talked about a couple times, certainly with this full board, also with some of the department heads. And I have asked the GSA director to come back with a condensed plan on cost and timeline, what it would take to actually do a centralized reception in this office, in this center, and what the benefit would be with that. And when I get that, I will be bringing that back to this board. Certainly, the executive office continues to work and prepare for budget hearings. We're working with the department heads, as you know, on our budget issues. I've also been meeting with the sheriff. I've been meeting with him regularly, and I will meet with him again this week to talk about his budget and his positions. We're developing the position allocation table, as I mentioned last week in the report, and attempting to eliminate those positions that have been vacant and unfunded for 25 months or longer. And as I reported out, we do have positions on our position allocation table that have been vacant and defunded for 43 months. So I think it's really time that we seriously look at those positions and begin to delete positions from our table. And also, I'd like to report that I went to a CSAC training last week on retirement. It was, the training was done by Bartell and Associates Actuary, and the whole training was on Kelpers and the 1937 Act. I have to say that I came away thinking that we have more restrictions in the 37 Act than I thought before I went to the training. And so it was a good training. I came back with some information, and I will be making copies of those handouts for the board. And I think that's about it for today. Thank you very much.
Nobody was there, Tom?
Thank you.
Said pension obligation bond?
No, but actually, if I could just say, the consultant that was training us said that the last thing you want to do today is a pension obligation bond. So that was interesting. Thank you.
Was that before Sonoma County did it or after? They weren't at the meeting, huh?
No comment. Agenda Item Number 5C, our legislative platform.
There's nothing today, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to mark that off. Next, we're going to go to Supervisors' Reports from Assigned Boards, Councils, Commissions, Other Meetings Attended, Standing Committees, Chair Reports, also Ad-Hoc Committee Reports, Board Members.
Would we include that in the...
Oh, yes. That was, yeah, we talked about that. Yeah. Yeah. Board Members, this is the time.
None here.
Supervisor Smith, and then I've got quite a bit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to report that I...
You better not. Excuse me?
I wanted to report that I was part of the CSAC phone conference that was the Agricultural and Natural Resources Policy Committee, going over the possible support, oppose, or take no position for up-and-coming propositions. The first one that we took up in the conference call, which was for the Sierra Nevada Forest and Community Initiative, it's on sustainable forestry practices, trying to get buy-in of very diverse stakeholders. And again, these are just positions of the Agriculture and Natural Resources Policy Committee that go on to the governing, the governing body in the board. So it's not a final determination by any means for CSAC overall. So the committee did support the Sierra Nevada Forest and Community Initiative. There was a support position. I believe it was voted on unanimously. On the next two action items, after much discussion, the committee voted to take no position on Prop 21, which is, as we know, the Parks Position. We have already weighed in on that, supporting that. But the committee decided to take no position. And the same was the action on Prop 23, which was the measure to suspend AB 32, discussed its pros and cons. And the vote was to send a no position forward to the body. Did want to comment on the last item, which was not an action item. Those were the only three action items that the committee took up. But just so you know, there was an update on Williamson Act activities. The staff reported that there will be an effort to reconvene the working group. The working group will consider AB 2530 as a possible vehicle to resolve the issue. A strong feeling that we need the long-term fix, not just this constant discussion.
Um, when you talk about the bill, you said Assembly Bill?
Yes, I believe so. If I have it right.
Okay, Senator Wiggins also has a bill.
They mentioned AB 2530.
AB 2530?
Correct. And I forget, I don't have written down the author of that, but I believe that was the one that they were talking about was one vehicle to create the longer-term fix. Let's see, they want, they want to bring county councils in for review on this issue as they had done previously. There's some push for a $10 million figure in the budget for the subvention process. But again, back to the legislative, strong feeling in CSAC that a legislative fix needs to be the real thing to work on, as we, we've really already had that discussion. I think pretty much we concur with that. We might want to, after the working group reconvenes, we, as an entity in Mendocino County, might want to contact the conference committee to encourage support for the $10 million, if that's, if that's really the end of the line, supporting the $10 million figure or a full amount figure, whatever we would determine would be the most appropriate or the more appropriate way to weigh in. So that's something we ought to be thinking about.
Okay, and if there's going to be a vote on the governing board, I, yeah, it would be good to have a position from our board. I don't know if our general government standing committee wants to weigh in, and I'm not exactly sure what is on the CSAC Board of Directors scheduled for September 9th. And I will try to bring forward an agenda prior to that time.
Madam Chair, one other report briefly. There was, I could not participate in this because it was happening concurrently with the Agriculture and Natural Resources Policy Committee discussion, which since it had votes seemed a little, seemed more important. But the group that we are a part of, the North Coast Local Agency Coastal Coordinating Committee, also had a phone conference at the same time. But I did get a report. I spoke with Jim Martin from the coast, or I didn't speak with him, but got a voicemail from him asking for a report. And it, I think it'll be reflected in the minutes from this group that this group is not just charged with dealing with the Marine Life Protection Act, but that is certainly on the front burner right now with the things that, as this process is really sort of amping up towards conclusion. So the message I got was that there would be strong support within the, within this coordinating committee group to support what's called the Emerald Array, but they are going to seek confirmation from various stakeholders, bringing it to the Board of Supervisors for possible endorsement. And this is, again, a regional approach, not just about us here locally, but that we might be seeing this in the near future, that they would bring us, this to us, asking for our support of that particular array as being a consensus document, I think.
Thank you. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did attend the Workforce Investment Board, the Economic Development Finance Corporation, and Supervisor Smith and I met as the ad hoc committee to work on the ballot argument for the tax measure. And also, the letter to the cities has gone out inviting them to participate in discussions about revenue sharing of the funds to be realized from the measure, should it pass.
Okay. And that was part of what I wanted to bring up under reports, that the clock is ticking on all the ballot submittals. And August 30th, you know, we've got a...
August 20th.
August 20th, and then we can do a rebuttal as well. So I need to, you know, weigh in on this.
You're going to be in town, aren't you?
This Friday? Perhaps? I'm teasing. Yes, I will be in town.
Well, actually, you can't weigh in. The board delegated the responsibility to the ad hoc to prepare the argument. All you're going to do is sign it.
I agree.
Okay.
But if I'm not here on the 20th, to sign, is that an issue?
Oh, we're in trouble.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And I'm going to go forward with my reports. IWPC had a meeting, and they will be going forward with the all-boards meeting on September 9th, 6:00 p.m. It'll be at Ukiah Valley Conference Center. And we will have the Corps of Engineers there discussing Coyote Valley Dam, et cetera, et cetera. Terry Marx is the new project person. Also, I think that's all I needed to, oh, we are going to engage with a grant writer, someone that also looks for grants as a match for the feasibility study, funds that may come from the feds. And that way, local government would have to spend less. We have an idea of a person, and myself and Janet Polly have been assigned as the subcommittee to work with this individual, at least interview him. So we're working on that. And then IWPC wanted to know from County Council if we had weighed in on a letter that was submitted. I thought something was coming forward, but it was a letter that was written to Supervisor Pinches from Attorney Chris Neary, Russian River Flood Control, did a response to it. And I believe that County Council was instructed, because evidently there was some information or, that County Council had done a number of years ago, not a number, but a few years ago, and you were going to dig out that information and compare. So they just wanted to remind me that they hadn't seen anything, and it has to do with... so they just wanted to remind me that they hadn't seen anything, and it has to do with Russian River Flood, you remember the Neary letter?
Right, right, no, I do remember the Neary letter, I'm just...
And the County Water Agency, and the, um, accusations made by Mr. Neary as to who should be in charge of the water, also...
Madam Chair, why would, why would we even want, if, unless that was the direction we wanted to go, why does it need to be...
I think there needs to be some clarity, and the county evidently, this has come up before, in previous years, and there was a legal opinion that was issued at that time, I would sure like the county to come forth with it again.
My point is, though, you're gonna get legal opinions, one way or the other, if you want to pursue it, then it would go to a court case, judges give opinion, decisions, and attorneys give opinions, so I don't see, I mean, it's kind of a, I guess, but if it takes a lot of...
What I'm having to do is, I will look...
We received the letter from Mr. Neary, or directed to Supervisor Pinches, but then the Russian River Flood Control directly sent a letter to the board referencing an opinion prepared by, I think, a Mr. McMerchie, and I think it would be valuable to hear from county council, without doing a raft of research on it, but I think that it'd be appropriate for county council to weigh in.
But only if we wanted to pursue it?
I, well, I think it's appropriate, 'cause it's an issue out there in the public, and the public is wondering what the position of the board is, I think we could leave it to county council to look into it, either send us a memo, or bring us an agenda item as she deems appropriate.
Okay.
I thought we were trying to reduce staff level of workload here.
Well, it was just a question, and, um, it seemed that county council, when we discussed it, was very interested in pulling out that former paper that was looked at by a board of the past, so let's go forward, let's...
I'm not interested in hitting the hornet's nest unless you're getting, unless you're intended to knock it down, there's no just sense in walking by and hitting the hornet's nest, just for the sake of getting stung.
Well, when, okay.
What's that?
That's what I thought our job was.
Yeah.
You're in the wrong place.
It was mine yesterday morning, so we're gonna go forward. I'm going to be attending, and Supervisor Smith talked about this, CSAC Board of Directors meeting, September 9th, in Sacramento, and then also, CSAC's going to have their annual meeting in November, and it's at Riverside, and information will be coming out really soon on it. Going forward, I received a notification, and actually, it came from our CEO, that PG&E annually holds, um, a meeting on an emergency plan for the Potter Valley Project, and since I looked into it, and it made sense what the response was back to me, it is about fires and lock gates, and what do you do here and there with the whole electrical facility, and also, the project itself, the tunnel, and all the operations, and they have a need to work with CAL FIRE and local emergency responders, but I am going to go, because I feel it's invaluable, being just a half a mile from the project itself, and then also, a supervisor, basically, when an emergency happens within their district, needs to know about responses, so I want to become educated, and no comment from you Supervisor Pinches, I'm moving on with my report.
Please, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, you can.
Well, that's the best reason to keep water going through that tunnel anyway, 'cause the water will keep it from burning up.
Well, that's probably true, but if it's a medical emergency, I don't know what it's about, and that's why I'm going. The Potter Valley Irrigation District has formed, um, well, it isn't a subcommittee, they've taken action to take part in the stewardship council process, to apply for receiving donation of fee title and conservation easement on PG&E watershedlands, jointly with the Golden State Land Conservancy, and this has to do with the PG&E bankruptcy of years past, when all of that was settled, a very, uh, large amount of money was put into a trust, and there were lands of PG&E that, um, basically, the court said, these will, um, since the ratepayers paid for these, um, these lands will be donated back to worthy nonprofits, counties, whatever. So, the Potter Valley Irrigation District, as I said, along with the Golden State Land Conservancy, are looking into this, and they have made, they made the first round, they're in the second rounds, and others that are looking into those lands, although not in Mendocino County, it is in Lake County, is the Mendocino National Forest, and their landsperson is David Rourke, and I'm not sure if he's out of Willows, or just exactly where his office is, but there is concern by everyone about who those lands go to, it's my understanding, the Potter Valley Tribe is also another entity that is in the process, although there were 28 applications submitted for the different rounds, but it could be a very big responsibility for the irrigation district, but they are seeking it out. I have been called by Bob Jordan, he's the regional manager in Mendocino County for United Way, and I need to return his call, Ms. Angelo and I have talked about it, he wants, um, he wants someone on this board to speak to him about, as being a representative, and also, about honoring the volunteers that have been involved in United Way, do you have more information?
Madam Chair, if I may, Wednesday, September 8th, is the Day of Caring, and that's the day that United Way puts on with the City of Ukiah, and there are volunteers, and they work on various projects, and they spend the whole day doing this, and in the past, while the county has had representation, our representation is needed again this year, and really at a higher level. Along with that, the City of Ukiah and United Way always do the opening ceremony around 8:00 in the morning, essentially the kickoff, and this year, United Way has asked that the county also be there for the kickoff, and so it would be you, Madam Chair, or another representative from the Board of Supervisors that would be there for the 8:00 AM kickoff for the Day of Caring. Additionally, so you know, we always put out an all-staff email, so everyone knows about the Day of Caring, and we encourage our staff to volunteer, however, we cannot pay their time, they have to take either vacation time or comp time, so that's, that's really the reason he's calling you, for your participation in the Day of Caring.
And I'm asking my colleagues if that's okay, if I participate as chair, and represent the County Board of Supervisors, as well as County of Mendocino.
Former CAO Mike Scannell was very active in United Way.
I've been very active in the past as well, so.
And it is my understanding that Supervisor McCowen has spent time volunteering in the past for the Day of Caring as well.
Okay. Anyone else want to join me? I would absolutely love it.
What day, what day is it?
It is September 8th, which would be on a Wednesday, at 8:00 AM, and I do not know where.
Yeah, it is either at the City of Ukiah, or it's at the courthouse, I'm not certain, but Mr. Jordan has that information for you, or I could get that for you tomorrow.
Okay.
I think, I think it is at City Hall, yeah.
Uh, while I've participated in United Way efforts, I've never participated in the Day of Caring, so that'll be new for me. Also, the Tri-County Effort, three supervisors working together to look at a grant proposal to bring AWEB money into Mendocino, Sonoma, and Napa for off-stream ponds, we had another meeting, and there's 2 million acres within the area that we're looking at, just getting out there, trying to find money, um, to help these ponds be built, to protect species, listed species, and also protect our wine grape industry, and such as pears also in this county, so we held our second meeting, and our third meeting won't occur till a couple of months off, 'cause now, we've gathered the information, and we'll be doing the serious writing of the proposal, I do have a draft, and we talked about that, made suggestions, so we will be moving forward. On August 31st, from 1:00 to 3:00, that is actually a Tuesday, and we will be busy with, um, the budget hearings, but there will be, this is put on by the Redwood Valley, um, County Water District, and they're doing it for agriculture, watertight pond seminar, to help with some of the issues of the ponds that are losing water, and if people haven't built a pond, but are thinking about doing it, this is a time that they can go and engage with professionals, and learn the latest techniques, so, anyway, that's going forward. Thank you.
Did you mention Sunnyvale?
Um, actually, we talked about it today, we did bring it up at a board meeting in the past, where you, they had asked me, and I guess they had also asked you, Supervisor McCowen and I will be going to Sunnyvale on Thursday with the North Coast Builders Exchange, and we will be visiting Planning and Building Services, um, to see what their streamlined process is like, and we will be joining with other supervisors, um, I guess Lake County, Sonoma, I'm not sure how widespread, but...
City council members.
And also, city council members, and going on this trip, so.
And not only the, you know, planning and building necessarily, but as I understand it, basically, everyone who interacts with the public over the phone or the counter is very customer service oriented, and that's a big positive for economic development, or providing any kind of service. If I may, I'd just like to quickly mention, uh, one other item, on Thursday, the 26th, there will be a residential crisis forum involving mental health, it's a big issue of where do people go when they're in crisis, if there were some kind of, uh, crisis hospice, or, you know, any type of local facility that would avoid people potentially having to be either arrested or hospitalized out of county, so that will take place Thursday, August 26th, at the Ag Commissioners Conference Room, 1:30 to 4:30.
And I thank you for that, if you've ever tried to help someone that's having a mental health crisis situation, it's, it's so important, 'cause it's a very emotional situation. Okay, we're going to move on to appointments to boards and commissions, that's agenda item number 10. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I got kind of a concern here, if you go to item AA, the first five Mendocino, I've had a, a person in my district that's applied, and their application's been on, filed for quite some time, and it seems like they always, I don't know how many of these existing, they're, they keep going for reappointment and reappointment, but I don't know, it's, and they're actually appointed by the Board of Supervisors, so I'd like to see, somehow to get, I guess, some, a little bit of a new blood on there, rather than just keeping the same people reappointed and reappointed, and so, if you look at that, it says "Applications on file, you'll carry," I'd like to see if I could get her appointed.
Well, here's, here's one of...
I realize the staff didn't recommend, but they keep recommending the people who are on there, but how do you ever get any new blood on to this organization, if they just keep go for reappointments?
Okay, here, here's one of the, the problems that I think you're trying to address, are the bylaws of an organization that basically, um, states that they must be recommended by staff, or the commission itself, I'm not quite sure what these bylaws say, do you have a copy of them?
Yeah, well, I, that's my point, though, if, I mean, it's like, that's, they're always gonna probably recommend the person that's been on there, and wants to do it again, rather than, but my point is, at some point in time, that's why you have a board of nine people, hopefully, you'll keep bringing on some new blood, and maybe some new ideas and thing, otherwise, it's just pretty repetitious. I don't know, I'm not speaking against these people that are up for, to be reappointed or anything, or I'm not, but I'm just, it, it brings up the point, if they're gonna keep, if it's staff, gonna keep putting the recommendations, and they're always gonna recommend people that's already been on there for, for new recommendations, for new reappointment, how do you ever get any new blood on, or any new ideas into it?
Okay, well, it might be a, a good idea if you go and address that with the staff people, find, I, obviously...
Madam Chair, if I may?
I guess I'm basically speaking to Supervisor Colfax on this issue.
I'm sure, may I?
Absolutely, sir.
It's categorical in some regards, the committee, so it's a fairly limited amount of turnover, but there's the additional fact here, that there hasn't been considerable turnover within the last, a couple of years, on the, I, I have not contributed to it, having sat on it from the beginning, and we'll finally get off here.
David, I guess that's my point, this person that wants to get on, it's been, had her application on file for at least the last two, three years.
Yeah, I just wonder if, if whether or not it's one that's categorically not been opened, I just don't know, so.
Well, they say, general representatives, yeah.
'Cause this person's really showed some real interest, she's kept her application on file, periodically, she calls me and says, "How can I get on that?"
Yeah.
I just think she has some real interest in it.
We've had pretty, pretty substantial turnover, though, it's very different than...
And, and that's for which board?
That's First Five Commission, and if you go to the very back of your set of appointments, you'll see...
Yeah, I, I see it, but, uh, what I'd like to say is that, a lot of these boards, we actually have the protocol, that the board, the advisory board, or whichever it is, recommends to us who they would like to have serve with them, I don't know if that's true of First Five or not.
That's what it is in the bylaws.
But, so, they're, they're really appealing to the wrong place, they should be attending meetings of the First Five, and making relationships, and making their interests known.
Well, yeah, but if you look at their, under Article 3 of the Members, it says, "Recommendations for membership shall be submitted to the First Five Mendocino Coordinator, who will present recommendations to Board of Supervisors," so basically, if the Mendocino Coordinator don't have a reason that they don't want to appoint that person, whoever it is, then there's no way that, that it ever would come to us for an appointment.
Well, that's, that's the current policy, and if we wanted to have a discussion on changing the policy, we'd have to agendize that.
But it also says that all members of the First Five Member Mendocino shall be appointed by the Board of Supervisors, period.
And that's what's, and that's required under our ordinance, but Supervisor...
But it's kind of catch 22.
I know, but Supervisor Colfax is correct, there are categories, and it may be that this individual doesn't fall within a particular category.
If you look at the categories, there, let me read the category part, "The composition of the Board shall include a member represented to the Board of Supervisors, at least two members representing county services, and any additional members." Then it goes on, saying, "Membership should include representatives from various economic, social, geographic, ethnic, environmental, cultural, occupational age groups," so that, I don't see where the categories are real.
No, the categories are very specific, it's in the ordinance, they've just given you a memo that's very generalized, but in Section 9.34060, under membership, it specifically addresses what categories that you need to glean from, so...
Well, okay, my, my argument to that, or my point is to that, if the person doesn't fit in any categories, then why have they been holding an application on file for over two years?
Madam Chair, on page two, I will move appointment of Scott Schneider, Stephen Omera, and Camille Schrader to the Workforce Investment Board.
Second.
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint the individuals as listed to the Work Investment Board by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Smith, Supervisor Colfax has already voted, but let's do so again, sir.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none. Now we're going to go forward, we have G Mac, and there's only one opening, and, but there is an alternate opening, but they didn't apply for that.
Right, we have a certain delay in getting some resignation letters in for the opening, and the opening is preferred rather than the alternate.
Right.
So what I would do is I'd move that we appoint to the open position Stephen Hunt, and then D. Williams, D. Williams Denton will be before us next week, I believe that's the case, within two weeks.
Hey, it says four here, so you can only appoint one this week.
Right, Hunt, you're saying.
Just one, yeah, so.
So I'll second that. You said Hunt?
Stephen Hunt is to be the appointee this week.
David, back to that first five issue, would you come?
Well, let's vote on the motion.
Let's finish this right, right here, for just a sec. Okay, for, yes, it's been moved and seconded for a G Mac appointment of Stephen Hunt to the member, and then we'll have it on again next week. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed, hearing none. Supervisor Pinches on first five commission, sir?
I just, we'll deal with it. David said he would get it.
Okay, okay. That sounds good, and you know there's a letter of resignation coming for, for G Mac?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That's true.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other business?
There's one more appointment, or you're gonna-
Oh, is there?
We're gonna defer it, or why?
Did I miss it?
First five.
Okay, first five commission.
So I'd like to see that be held off till David gives me an answer to that.
Board, what is your-
Well, my point of it is, I don't know, I don't know the record, but if them people have been reappointed two and three, four times, wouldn't it be a good idea to get maybe somebody new in there or something?
Supervisor, if I may, this, there is currently the chair of the first five, so I think it would not, it would be appropriate to reappoint.
You know, I'll go along with appointing the two, it's just some of the concern that I have in the future.
And Tammy Scott is a categorical-
But if we have a nine-member, my point is, if we have a nine-member board, and somebody shows their interest for a year after year, and keeps their application on file, and we keep appointing the same members over and over and over, how do we, how do you ever get any new blood or new ideas in there, is my point.
I agree.
So is that a motion, Supervisor Colfax?
Yeah, for those two.
For those two?
Second.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Colfax, seconded by Supervisor Smith for the first five Mendocino representatives, Tammy Scott, and Lucrecia Rentera.
Lucrecia.
Lucrecia.
Renteria.
Renteria. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed, hearing none. Motion carries. Anything else?
Yeah, announcement, Madam Chair, in Brown Valley this weekend's the world famous Blackberry Festival, you're all welcome to it.
Oh, yes.
And also in Leightonville is the, about a 75-year-old, the, it's between Leightonville and Willets, the old timers baseball game. It's gonna, it'll be held on Saturday, not Sunday. So come up and go to Leightonville, the old timers game Saturday, and go to Covelo on Sunday to the Blackberry Festival.
Is he 75, you getting on that?
No, it's been going, a 75-year-old tradition, I think. It was a rivalry baseball game between the business people of Leightonville and the business people of Willets. I'm too young to play in it, though, David.
Okay, okay, everybody, we're gonna adjourn for the day. Thank you.